The School District of Waukesha, the full Board of Education meeting that we have once a month, this is August 8th, 2018. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and let's stand together. [applause] Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own. Sue, will you take the roll call, please?
William Baumgart.
Here.
Barbara Brusink.
Here.
Greg Dietz.
Here.
Amanda Roddy.
Here.
Diane Voight. Patrick McCaffery.
Here.
Kurt O'Brien.
Here.
Karen Reinacek.
Here.
And Joseph Como.
Here. Sue Diane is excused this evening. Actually, she's, I think, in Tanzania, so we didn't think it would be a good idea for her to fly back just for tonight, so. And Sue, have we also been properly posted for this meeting?
Yes, we have.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to just take a moment to read just a quick quote by Alexandra K. Trenfer. I really like this, and I thought I'd share this with you. "The best teachers are those who show you where to look but not tell you what to see."
That's right.
May I say Barbara?
Absolutely.
Moving on, bright lights. Seeing that school's not in session yet, we do not have a bright lights tonight, but Chris Hedstrom has a couple of recognitions. She'll be introducing our new interim principal at Hawthorne and also our new director of buildings and grounds.
Thank you, Mr. Como. This evening, I would like to introduce to you the principal at Hawthorne Labs School, Carly Solberg. Carly, would you please join me? You approved Carly's contract as a one-year interim principal, and what the heck is that, right? So, we didn't exactly go through our entire process in selecting a new principal, and so we thought that it would be prudent to offer a one-year. But let me tell you a little bit about Carly. If you don't remember, Carly has roots going back to 2009 when she was an elementary school teacher at Whittier Elementary. She was there for three years, and then she left for just one year and went over to Greenfield School District. And then, what do you know, she decided to come back to Waukesha because, you know, all good people come back to Waukesha, right Darren?
Yes.
So, she was an elementary education teacher at Hawthorne when it was the STEM School for two years, and she was so successful at that, she became the effectiveness coach there. And she served in that role for two years, and in between, she was also the summer school principal at Hawthorne. And then, in the past year, she was the dean of teaching and learning. So, let me tell you, she knows Hawthorne kids, she knows the Hawthorne teachers, she knows the Hawthorne parents, and, you know, I don't know what your school colors are, Carly, but you must be bleeding it by now, right?
Yes.
So, I just wanted to introduce you, Carly. We're really excited to have her here, and I hope you make her feel welcome as a new principal in our school district.
Thank you. I'm beyond honored to serve in this capacity at Hawthorne. Like Chris said, I'm extremely passionate about the Hawthorne community. I've been invested there for a long time, and I know that our staff is extremely talented and dedicated, and they've been really supportive in my transition. And I also know that our students and families are the best, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Carly. Certainly sound ready, Carly.
Thank you.
The next person I would like to introduce to you is Timothy Williamson. Tim, could you join me, please? Tim has been selected last week as the person to replace Glenn Norder as our director of facilities. As you know, Glenn is going to be retiring at the end of September after, I think, nearly 42 years of service to the school district, 43 years, thank you. And he's been a Waukesha person for a very long time, and I think that we're pretty lucky in finding somebody like Tim. Tim is also a Waukesha fella. I mean, his kids go to school here, he lives here, he's all about Waukesha School District, and best for us is that he's gained some experiences elsewhere, too. So, it's like, he's kind of seen the world, and now he's, you know, going to be here at home as well, so we're pretty excited to have him. He was a project manager and field superintendent with the MA Mortenson, doing all kinds of, like, construction stuff, not really my wheelhouse here. But, and then he was the field superintendent for CG Schmidt, and for the past three years, I think, three years, he's been over at the West Alice, West Milwaukee School District. So, he did get his feet wet in public education, so he knows a little bit more about what he's getting into. So, he's going to be starting sometime in September. Did we say the 10th or the 17th?
12th.
The 12th, something like that, so I'd like everybody to welcome Tim Williamson.
Yeah, I grew up in Waukesha. I actually grew up right by Waukesha North High School, 500 feet from the football field, so I went to Lowell Butler, graduated from North in 91. I have a 10-year-old who's currently at Rose Glenn. I have a three-year-old who will start Rose Glenn in next September, so he doesn't make the cutoff this year. He doesn't turn four until November, so. But I thank for the opportunity, I look forward to working with the team and using my 20-some years as a general contractor to bring some experience of that into the district, so thank you.
Welcome, Tim. You have some big shoes to fill.
I do, I do. I've known Glenn since high school, used to cut the football fields.
And thanks for sharing some stories on Monday on what made you tough, you know, walking those long distances to school, no matter if it was raining or snowing or whatever.
That's right. Yeah, walking to Butler, uphill both ways. There and back.
Welcome, Tim.
Thank you.
I just want to clarify one thing. As somebody who is involved in recruiting employees in our school district, you do not have to be a resident of Waukesha to work here, so, you know, check we can and apply.
Thank you, Chris. Tonight, we do not have a student representative's report, so we're going to move on to our time where we listen to our citizens address the Board of Education. And as we have done as past practice, we'd like to limit that to three minutes, but we do have a few more speakers tonight. I think we can still keep it at three minutes. We'll keep it at three minutes. At the two-and-a-half-minute mark, Kurt will give you a signal to try and wrap your comments up, final 30 seconds. This evening, we expect that our speakers will honor our time limit, will refrain from using any inappropriate language in any manner, and be respectful in their comments, and I want to emphasize respectful in your comments. There were some borderline ones last time. Speakers who do not meet these expectations may be prohibited from speaking at future Board of Education meetings. We also expect that the audience will be respectful of the speaker and of the Board of Education and refrain from responding with verbal comments, cheering, applause, or other behavior that detracts from the meeting. Also, in order to respect our speakers, please silence your phones at this time if you haven't already. And like I said, we do have 12 people who have signed up. First person is Carl Locke, followed by Joyce Schmitz.
Good evening again. Thank you for allowing me to speak. We, the Waukesha Citizens Against Gun Violence, were very disappointed after reading the draft resolution created on July 12th by the Safety Committee. It fails the children of Waukesha School District in two major ways. Number one, the resolution is weak because it fails to call attention to the inadequacy of existing state gun regulations, and namely, the need for a ban on assault weapons. Two, the resolution is weak because it removes the board from having to take a stand on these important issues. A school safety resolution is not legislation, nor is it necessary to figure out the details or which governmental body should write the laws concerning it. It's words on a paper that nevertheless will have big impact on telling our legislators what's important. If you think that the safety of children and the carnage that can occur has no relationship to the availability of assault weapons or the current state of gun laws, say so. Realize your refusal to speak will be taken as acceptance of the status quo. A school safety resolution should be what you, as board members, parents and grandparents believe is necessary to safeguard the children in your care. It should not be a vehicle to pass the buck or avoid weighing in on what should be said. And although it is good to check on what the community thinks, in the end, it's your opinion that matters. That's what leadership is all about. We ask you put aside politics and just think of the kids. Pass a resolution that calls attention to the inadequacy of existing state gun regulations, and namely, the need for a ban on assault weapons. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Locke. Joyce Schmitz, followed by Jennifer Berison. Berison? Can't quite read that.
Good evening again. I want to take a moment to review our requests and what it is not about. It is not about and does not require a change in the Constitution. It is not about handguns or rifles or shotguns used for hunting. It does not require the district to incur any cost or take any further action. We are only asking for a one-time resolution that makes a statement about the assault weapons that are used to kill students and faculty in schools and to kill others in places we all have been, churches, theaters, concerts, city streets, and college campuses. So many others have endorsed this ban. Other school districts, including a group of 70 of the largest districts in the nation, the American Medical Association, the American Academy of Pediatrics, the National PTA, the National Education Association, all organizations devoted to the education or well-being or health of children. Even former presidents Gerald Ford, Ronald Reagan, and George W. Bush stood up to the political pressure and supported and endorsed a ban. The other night, I was reading again about the events at Sandy Hook, the grade school in Connecticut where six staff members and 26- and 7-year-olds were killed by somebody with an assault weapon. I don't know how anybody can read about that or just know about it and not want to support students and others who are trying to end the horror and grief that these weapons cause. If you approach this as a parent or grandparent and not as a politician, I can't imagine it not getting to your heart. Reading about Sandy Hook some more, I began to wonder about the members of the board who don't support our resolution. I wondered whether it would make a difference if instead of Sandy Hook, it happened here. What if we were referring to 26- and 7-year-olds who were killed with an assault weapon at higher elementary, Summit View, Hillcrest, or Rose Glenn? Would you be thinking differently about this now? We have been reluctant to ask the next question, but it's something for you to consider. If next month, or next year, or three years from now, in Waukesha, or someone else in Wisconsin, or another state, another 15, 20, 30 children are killed by someone with one of these weapons, how would you feel then if you had said no to banning these weapons? Do these weapons really deserve more protection than our children? Thank you.
Jennifer, followed by Steve Schmitz. How do you pronounce your last name, Jennifer? I'm sorry.
B-E-I, I don't write very well, do I?
And I have trouble pronouncing last names, too.
I'm a mom, I'm a grandma, I'm a retired RN. One of my children, be it child, grandchild, is an adopted special needs child, and it has me shaking in my ever-lovin' boots that he will have access, if his mind goes the wrong direction one day, to having some kind of weapon, be it, and specifically, an assault weapon, where he can do, I just can't fathom it, and we're doing everything in our power to raise someone who can be responsible and a productive member of society. But if society doesn't pack him and help him, it's not going to happen. That was an editorial comment. Now, what I wrote to each of you as individuals on the board, I'm just going to reiterate or iterate it, if I may please. "Thank you for addressing the increased needs for mental health care for our students by requesting adequate funds to properly staff our schools with counselors and psychologists who may actually, if the funds are there, be able to use their education to serve the students as opposed to doing paperwork. Please do your utmost to keep our children safe and secure in body, mind, and spirit." To need shooter drills in elementary schools is beyond my imagination. Why are we, what are we doing to the security and the innocence of our youngsters and youth? What in heaven's name are we teaching them? Drill time, to try to save lives in case a person comes in the classroom and starts rapid-fire shooting. Okay, that's done. Now, kids, get out your math. Really? What are we destroying as we protect our freedom to market and use the assault rapid-fire weapons? The freedom to bear arms, as in any freedom, comes or should come with responsibility and with responsible decisions. I understand that you are not the legislature, but you hold more influence than any one voice, and your voice has some authority, and you speak for the children you serve. Please be responsible for the children's sake, literally. May the wisest decision for the greatest good be yours.
Steve Schmitz, followed by Matthew Gifford.
Good evening. The school safety resolution that you will be discussing this evening is not adequate. It makes no mention of assault weapons or the private sale loophole, and it doesn't even refer to background checks. The things it does refer to are not enough to effectively address mass shootings in schools and elsewhere. And if a member of the Safety and Security Committee tells you that it is a compromise because they borrowed a whereas paragraph from a resolution that we submitted many months ago, don't be fooled. It's not a compromise. What would be a compromise would be to take the resolution and amend it by adding a statement in support of a ban on assault weapons and high-capacity magazines, closing the private sale loophole, and diligently enforcing background checks. What you then end up with is everything that the committee wants, all of its language, plus the things that we have been advocating for, for a number of months. And if that amended resolution passes, we're done. That compromise would be a fair way to bring this matter to an end. I brought this enlarged photograph with me tonight because I want to make a comment about how things have changed in the last 29 or 30 years. This is a photograph of the first day at Bethesda Elementary of kindergarten for the children there. Back then, no one gave any thought to anyone going into a school with an assault weapon and murdering children this young. Not parents, not students, not teachers, not administrators, not school board members. Nobody thought of it back then, but we think about it now. Not all the time, but we think about it. Something else has changed. These little kids have backpacks on. Nowadays, if you go to the internet, you will find advertised on the internet, bulletproof backpacks, for kids this age, with illustrations that show the kids what position to be in if somebody comes into a school and starts shooting, what position provides them with the maximum protection. That's what it's come to in this nation. The parents of these kids got to see their kids grow up. The parents of the children that had been murdered at Sandy Hook and Columbine and at Parkland, they didn't get to see their kids grow up. Last June on Father's Day, while I was reading the newspaper, I saw this quote from the father of a girl killed at Parkland. "Today, I will begin Father's Day by going to the cemetery to visit my forever 14-year-old daughter, Jamie. It is just over four months since she was murdered at school. It will be many years before an assault weapons ban produces results, but if all we do is harden the schools, we're just going to end up with walls around schools and armed guards at the front door, and I'm afraid that not even that will be sufficient to stop some of these shootings with these assault weapons. Please support that ban. Thank you."
Matthew Gifford, followed by Emily McMeans.
We know you alone cannot pass state legislation, and we also know that you do not have control outside of the realm of schools. That is why I'm here to tell you what you can do in regards to school safety. School is about education and preparing the next generation, which is why we also do need security. The security of children is of utmost importance. I am for the mental health funding and physical security, but entrances are not the problem. Security cameras are not the problem. Backpacks are not the problem. The problem lies in the effortless system in regards of purchasing a firearm in the state of Wisconsin. That is where we need security. Though I have already graduated from high school, I'm moving on to more schooling, another place where my friends or I could be the next candlelight. I helped organize a vigil, and I read about a freshman in high school who was gunned down in his favorite class, art. When I heard of the Santa Fe shooting, I was also in my favorite class, drawing and painting, too. This was very heartbreaking to me. I have friends who have survived such cases, which we are all too familiar with. It is time we stand up and face the real problem. It is time to go in the direction of limiting murderers to their access to high-powered weaponry that murdered those people's friends, along with the tens of thousands of people each year in the United States. That is why it is important for the students' safety to include universal background checks and closing gun sale loopholes, which 95% of Americans do support, into the piece sitting before you. I believe a school board member is justified in making a few people angry when putting the lives of children first. I will never forget seeing the videos of gunshots going off in Marjory Stoneman Douglas, or the excruciating pain when I met with some of the survivors of the senseless tragedy. I do not want to feel that pain ever again with a gunshot in a school in the state of Wisconsin. Thank you."
Kimberly, I'm sorry, Emily McMeans, and then Kimberly Coronado.
I am here to question the policy regarding the banning of carrying backpacks from class to class in our schools. In the case of the ban in my school, North, it is a reactionary measure to gun violence, which has increasingly been an issue within and outside of our schools in America. What it isn't is a proactive first step to actually securing the safety of our students. From the side of the students, it looks like an ineffective policy, which is blatantly a Band-Aid, meant to give the board a defensive leg to stand on should a tragedy happen at home. With gun violence at the heart of this ban, it creates a hysterical double standard, one where having backpacks in school grounds is more criminalized than giving firearms to people who should never have had them. The inability to stand against ineffective gun laws, but the tenacity to take away students' rights to bear backpacks is a show of lack of moral courage. What about your students when they go to the movies, like Aurora, to concerts, like Las Vegas, to restaurants, like in Nashville? What about at home when the death rates in domestic violence spike when the abuser has access to a gun? What about at home where gun suicides are more likely to end in death than nearly any other way? Will you blame the backpacks, or will you finally stand up and save us from the fear of being shot every moment just because we live in America? I'm not asking you to call upon the state and federal government for a gun ban, but as a child and an older sister, I am begging you to support common sense gun legislation, closing the gun show loophole, and stating a mandatory waiting period, having more comprehensive background checks and mental health screenings, so we can take the gun out of the bad guy's hand before testing whether or not school safety and security and will stop a shooting. Thank you.
Kimberly Coronado, followed by Keith Best.
Good evening. My name's Kimberly Coronado. I've lived in Waukesha County pretty much my whole life. I've went to all three schools my whole career here, raising a family here for... My schooling, I was very proud to be a Waukesha North graduate. I proudly say I have my picture on my bedroom wall. I wear it with pride. I'm really saddened when I've been raising my children and they've gone to school. My hope and my dream is that they would have the same experience that I did. My hope is that my children are safe. You have heard so many people talk about safety tonight. I'm here to talk about safety. My children, one of my dreams is that my children have the support that they require through IEPs, that they receive a free and appropriate public education, that I do not have to fight to have my child included, that he isn't rejected by his peers and teachers, that his IEP would be read before and during class and after class, that teachers would know him. I think school safety comes way before a backpack and way before a gun. It is a social-emotional regulation, teaching them coping skills, teaching them anger management in the moment, and giving them appropriate words to use when they're angry, and giving them the space to do that, to actually be in the moment and solve the problem, helping them, giving them skills. We need to also hold our leadership accountable. We need to have mandated reporters who report and keep our children safe. How can I stand before you and send my children to school when things happen in school and it is swept under the rug? It is not okay. It is not acceptable at all. I ask that you reteach all students, all staff, and administration mandated reporting according to Wisconsin State statute. We need to be a team. This shouldn't be a one-way conversation. It shouldn't fall on deaf ears. We need to be accepted as parents with lived experience. We want to bring our issues forward, but we feel like we can't, there's a wall there. When we don't have emails returned, when we are not allowed to meet with administration, it is not okay. We need transparency. We need honesty. We need integrity. We need accountability. We need our schools safe. Thank you.
Keith Best, followed by Luke Dykowsky.
Good evening. Superintendent Gray, President Como, and board members. Tonight, I think we're here, we all want the same thing. We all want school safety. We want students to be able to learn in a safe environment. As you know, I work in the state legislature. I think this resolution is misguided for a number of reasons, but, for example, Senate Bill 350 was presented to the Committee on Judiciary and Public Safety related to a ban on semiotic weapons and assault-style weapons. See, there's a difference. Real assault weapons are only, and two groups actually have them, the police and the military. That's it. People cannot get assault weapons. I have an assault-style weapon. Keep in mind, Columbine happened when assault-style weapons were banned. Now, I also like to share with you a press release put out July 10th, 2018, from the Wisconsin Department of Justice. Attorney General Brad Shimmel today announced a list of 40 schools and school districts that have been awarded the next round of grants through the Wisconsin Department of Justice School Safety Grant Program. Combined, the 40 schools and school districts will receive $2,895,000, which will be spent on building safety improvements as well as training for faculty and staff. More grants will be awarded soon. "School officials and law enforcement share the responsibility in keeping our kids safe when they leave their homes every day," said Attorney General Shimmel. "These grant funds will establish a meaningful way to improve school safety through a focus on mental health training for school faculty and physical improvements to school buildings." And there's a list of schools and school districts that have been awarded. Grant dollars are divided into two categories, the primary school safety grant and advanced school safety grant. The advanced school safety grants are awarded to schools that have met minimum security thresholds. There will be training for all staff on trauma-informed care, threat assessment, and active shooter response. This is a more meaningful way- This is a more meaningful way to address the situation than this resolution will, the resolution that will go nowhere. There's a number of different points in here, but I won't go through the whole thing. There's something else I wanted to share with you too, that you might not be aware of. Nothing can be more important than protecting our innocent children at school. That is why the National Rifle Association launched its National School Shield Program in 2012. Its singular mission is to protect our children and their learning environment. Any American school that needs immediate professional consultation and help with organizing and defining its own security solutions should call the National Rifle Association National School Shield Program, and they will provide immediate assistance, absolutely free of charge. The NRA's National School Shield seeks to engage communities and empower local leaders to make our schools more secure.
Aye.
Thank you. In case you want this, this is the August 2018 issue, and it has all that information. I'll get that free program.
Luke Dikowski, followed by Michelle Skakel?
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to start by posing a question that I actually think that Mr. Best set up very nicely. If we make our schools hard targets, like we've discussed quite a bit this evening, where's the next soft target? If we wash our hands tonight, where does the violence end? If an individual decides to perpetrate evil here in Waukesha, if they decide they want to cause harm to our neighbors, to our students, to our children, and they find that some of you, or Butler, or South, are too hardened, are they really just going to give up, throw their gun in the dumpster and go home? No. They will wait until the bells ring at 3:05, and then they'll find a soft target. It could be Waukesha Memorial Hospital, or the Public Library, or Cutler Park. They could shoot up the Majestic Theater, or Friday Night Live, or a West North football game, or the farmer's market. No matter how many SROs we train, and how often we call the NRA, and how much bulletproof glass we install, so long as individuals have unimpeded access to assault-style weapons, they will still be able to commit atrocities against our students here in Waukesha. Maybe not in our classrooms or in our cafeterias, but on our playgrounds, at our festivals, and in our streets, on a horrific scale, with a horrific efficiency unrivaled by a knife or a machete or a hunting rifle. Choosing only to build our schoolhouse bunkers is just passing the buck a little further down Main Street. If we want safety and security, the reckless proliferation of military-grade firearms has to end, and we have to demand it. The resolution on school safety should be amended to request legislative restrictions on access to automatic firearms. This is more than a stand for the safety of our teachers and students for seven hours a day. This is a stand against barbaric unfettered violence and a stand for civilized life. I'd like to say this as just kind of a parting thought to the board. We know that you want to do right by our children and by our students. Your constituents have been clear and have been forthright in presenting facts and statistics and testimonies that have not been countered and have not been refuted. Let your own desire to nurture and protect that got you on this board convince you to take a stand. Let the evidence convince you to act. From Connecticut to Florida, we have seen school districts lobby successfully for firearms controls, but these reforms have only come in the aftermath of tragedy. Our words as a district are powerful, so let's try to use them to make Waukesha an advocate for prevention rather than just another advocate for reaction. Thank you very much for your time.
Michelle, followed by Richard Dikowski. And what is your last name? I might have butchered it.
You did a nice job, the first time. Skakel, rhymes with taco. Sorry. Good evening. Thank you for your time this evening. I rise tonight in favor of amending the resolution on school safety to include a call for universal background checks and restrictions on access to automatic weapons. A main point of the opposition in past evenings has been that the idea that in mass shootings, the gun is not the problem, but we also heard from members of the community that automatic weapons are perfect for them, their spouses, and their children. They have little recoil, they're easy to aim and shoot, they have high magazine capacities and high rates of fire, and they're durable and accurate. These are the same qualities that make them perfect for our military. These are the same qualities that make them perfect for individuals who want to attack our children and our schools. Anyone with little to no experience in training can pick up an automatic assault-style weapon and fire it. Anyone can pick up an automatic assault-style weapon and use it to maim and kill. The destructive power of a military-grade firearm, paired with the ease of use and the ease of accessibility, make it easy to use, to maim and kill. Sorry, I lost my line. The fact that these weapons, sorry. The destructive power of the military-grade firearm, along with its ease of use and its ease of access, ease of access, make these weapons dangerous and make them the problem. From prescription medications to alcohol to lawn darts, we do what we can to access our children's limit to these things that are not intended to be destructive but are easy to misuse and harmful. Why wouldn't we limit access to firearms that are intended to be destructive, intended to be harmful, and so easy to use? Thank you.
Okay, Richard Dikowski, followed by Paul Reese.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you in advance for allowing me this time to speak. You have an opportunity to do something extraordinary, something that has the potential to benefit not only the citizens of the district and the county, but of the entire state. You have the chance to stand up with one voice and say enough is enough. It is truly time to act. You have an opportunity to speak for those that are too timid to speak for themselves, for those that have lost hope, and for those that feel that their elected officials no longer care about them or what they think. You have the chance to say, "We, as the representatives of the school district of Waukesha, believe assault-style weapons pose a real and imminent threat to our students and to our community, and you, the state legislature, must make sure this threat is extinguished." Assault-style weapons are designed and built for one purpose, and that purpose appears right in the name: assault. They're designed and built to kill as many people as quickly and as efficiently as possible. Please take this opportunity to say enough is enough and adopt a resolution on school safety that specifically and directly demands legislative action to restrict civilian access to automatic and assault-style firearms. Thank you.
Okay, Paul.
Man, I should lead a class on Hamlet, because I know about as much as that as these people do about guns. Said my automatic rifles are around. Fully automatic rifles have been illegal for a long time. The reason that fully automatic rifles were made illegal is interesting, because why would they make them? Compelled the legislation to make fully automatic weapons illegal? There are things like St. Valentine's Day massacre, which took place in Chicago, where seven people lost their lives due to something called a Thompson submachine gun. So they decided that we needed the ban for the automatic weapons. Well, we sure solved gang violence, haven't we? Because now that's like Wednesday, average Wednesday afternoon now there. It produced nothing. The result was nothing. But some people got to pat themselves on their back and feel good. Let's see, Frederick Nietzsche wrote something. Not that I'm a big fan of Nietzsche, but "All things are subject to interpretation. Whichever interpretation prevails at a given time is a function of power, not truth." History, I think, would be easier to understand astrophysics than sometimes history. We talk about assault weapons and these deadly assault weapons. This is a dummy round. This is from, and this is 223 or 556, which commonly shot out of an AR-15 or a saw or something like that. This was from World War I through Korea. This is a .30-86 round. It was shot with semi-automatic weapon as well. You tell me, this one, a bulletproof vest will have effect on. Your bulletproof glass will have an effect on this. This, it will not. This, it will cut through. Then there's this, it's actually a Superbowl, but let's just say it was like a musket ball at the time of the Civil War, or Revolutionary War. Of these three, which would be deadlier? I mean, in the past, they didn't know this. Which one would be deadlier? It would be, this one would be deadlier by far. In 1923, about my grandfather was getting on, going to school, and he slipped and fell off the school bus, which was a horse-drawn wagon, and he broke his, fractured his leg right above his ankle. By the time he got to Mayo Clinic, this is from Medford, Wisconsin, by the time they put him on train and got him to Mayo Clinic, gangrene had spread up past his knee. And this was in the 20s, so this is after World War, after World War I or the Great War at that time. Gangrene had spread up past his knee. So they took his leg and hit the hip. At least then they had morphine. At this time, you know, they didn't. But that's how they dealt with it at that time. How to cure the thing was just to start cutting you off, cutting pieces of you off to try to save you. I mean, most of the wars in the Civil War, you know, Gettysburg and that, they don't know how many people died exactly, because people died weeks later from the infection. Matter of fact, most people died from infections. But a semi-automatic gun is, this also, the 223 round that was not designed to kill people. Military designed it for a number of things. Obviously, it's cheaper to make, but their intent was to remove objects from a battlefield. And the more they remove from the battlefield, their interest was winning the battle, not necessarily killing people, but removing objects from the battlefield. So those are just some false statements. Thanks for your time.
Okay, that's everybody that had signed up prior to beginning the meeting to address the board. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to also step forward and address the board at this time? Okay, thank you, and thank you for being respectful. Appreciate it very much. Before you, we have a couple minutes for approval. July 11, 2018, we had a regular board meeting and also an executive session on the same day. Is there a motion to approve these minutes?
No move.
Moved by Mrs. Brusink. Is there a second? Second by Karen Reinacek. Is there any discussion? Okay, Sue, take the roll call vote.
Barbara Brusink.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Joseph Cuomo.
Aye. Passes eight zero. Moving on to our communications. Dr. Gray, do you have anything?
Nothing to say.
Okay. And Mrs. Brusink, do you have a Waukesha Education Foundation update?
I'm not a representative any longer, Mr. Cuomo.
Okay. Yeah, I have Barb's name down here for now, so.
That's great.
Did you?
I will cover one thing.
Go ahead. I realize that we switched over, Barb. I just thought you were substituting, so.
They sent it. I haven't been asked to, so.
Let me see. But, go ahead, Mr. Cuomo.
Thank you. Yesterday was the Waukesha Education Foundation golf outing. Very successful. There was over 100 people that came to play golf, and another large group that came just for dinner. I think it was very successful. We heard some nice talk from Ms. Colmidge, who's now the executive director of that organization, but she's going to be very helpful in bringing it forward and the successes of some of our grants, and a lot of prizes given away, a lot of auctions given away. I just feel a little bit bad that there was only one board member there and one that was there as a volunteer earlier in the day. So if you get a chance next year, just even if you don't play golf, come for dinner. It's worth it. They deserve the support that we could give them as a school board, and I think we should try, if you can. That's all I'm saying. That's it.
I did find a script here. I'm going to fill in a couple more points.
This was, you know, as I could think about it.
Okay, yeah, yeah, ad lib. Yeah, no, thank you. There are a couple more.
factual.
Yes, a couple more things that I can add here. It looks like WEF welcomed two new sponsors in July. Findorf is a gold sponsor, and Generac Power Systems is a silver sponsor. The WEF board appreciates any leads to potential sponsors via school board members and/or district vendors. During July, Lynette met with six new potential sponsors, and had a few more already scheduled for August. So they're looking for overall sponsors. I don't think that was for the event itself. I think it's just sponsoring.
Their sponsors.
Waukesha Education Foundation in general. The Waukesha Education Foundation Board is developing a small working committee to review and revamp some of our sponsorships options to better, to do a better job of including philanthropists versus businesses, and planned giving and memorial gift options. WEF recently joined the Wisconsin Philanthropy Network, WPN, formerly known as the Donors Network, to educate themselves in this process. You talked about the golf outing, upcoming events. Looks like...
Mr. Cuomo?
Yes.
If I may add something, please?
Yes.
Is it now a good time?
Sure.
Okay. Well, I used to be the board rep to the Waukesha Education Foundation, and I just wish every citizen in our community would have an understanding of what this organization does for the school district of Waukesha. These are business people, leaders in our community, who give an extraordinary amount of time to raise an extraordinary amount of money, to provide outstanding scholarship money to our students. And I just want you to know that this organization is absolutely phenomenal, very, very necessary to the school board and the school district of Waukesha, and we need to appreciate everything that they do, because without them, we would not have that support for our students. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, thank you. There are a couple of upcoming events. The Board of Education will be invited to our Partners in Education reception. That's going to be November 1st, so if you mark that on your calendars, that would be great. Also, WEF will be modifying the traditional Celebration of Excellence format in 2018, and we're looking to bring back the Celebration of Excellence bigger and better in 2019. This year, we will work within the format of the Enrollment Fair on December 1st and have our grant winners from 2017 and maybe 2018 display and explain their projects right alongside the school booths. WEF will host some other activities at the fair, and we're working with Terri and her team, along with the WEF COE Committee, to work through the details. So stay tuned for that. It's taking a little bit different form than in the past, and it should be good. So thank you, Bill, and thank you, Barb, and we kind of cobbled it together here on our own, so appreciate it. Any other comments on WEF that people would like to make? Not that we need a super ongoing report, but appreciate it. Moving on to our Charter School and Program Report, given by Mr. Baumgart.
Oh, report, just a golf outing.
Okay. And then we do have a CISA contract to consider, as we have for many years in the past. Dr. Cook, do you have some information on what that's looking like?
Sure. In front of you, you have the CISA contract. This includes the dollar amount for the services that we provide. If you peruse through the menu of services, it's anywhere from early childhood education to family engagement, to some of the title services that we access through the district. So this is an all-encompassing contract that touches on many, many areas of support for either our educators or our students. And this does require annual approval by the board.
Is there a motion? Mr. Baumgart?
I will make a motion for the approval of, I'm looking for the date, I'm sorry, CISA One contract for 1819. Thank you.
Is there a second to that?
Aye. Go ahead.
Second by Mrs. Reinacek. Discussion?
One question I do have. Are we staying in about the same ballpark dollar-wise as it's been in the past?
We're very close. The additions of the middle school alternative seats is an add for this year. It's been something that many southeastern Wisconsin districts have been reaching out to CISA for, and we have, because of the need, we have purchased some seats going into the school year.
Further discussion, questions? I mean, they've served us well. Obviously, you wouldn't come back and ask us to continue to work with them if...
They've been very good partners, very responsive to our needs and our neighboring districts' needs.
All right, Sue, please take the roll call vote. All right, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Barbara Brusink.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffery.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye, passes eight-zero, Sue. Thank you for that, Joe. Moving on to our consent agenda. Darren, did we receive any gifts?
Yeah, one gift tonight. Waukesha Engineering Preparatory Academy received seventy, $750 from SPX Transformer Solutions, Inc. This gift will be used to support the future needs of the academy.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that, that gift. Your agenda includes various categories for approval. There were no expulsions, and if any board member has any item that they wish to be set aside at this time, please indicate to discuss separately. Okay, seen none. Karen Reinacek, will you please present the consent agenda for approval?
Thank you, Mr. President. Earlier this evening, Human Resources and Compensation Committee approved of five resignations, two leaves of absence, and 23 new full, part-time and modified contracts. The information was provided in your packet and an addendum was placed on your desks. Mr. President, I move that the consent agenda be approved as amended.
Is there a second to that? Second by Mr. Dietz. Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffery.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Barbara Brusink.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye, passes eight-zero, Sue. Moving on to Dr. Gray's superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you. Very happy to report that I attended one of the national regional conferences for Avid last week in, in Minneapolis and was able to witness South student Grayson Cooley presenting at that event. He was one of two students. He was chosen out of 10,000 students and did an absolutely wonderful job there. Very excited about Avid. I think we have a lot of staff that are excited about it. Amanda Wagner, who's our district coordinator, has done a wonderful job in, 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 in working with our high schools and middle schools, and now we even have two elementary schools, low and higher, that will be pursuing Avid certification. So the results that, that I had an opportunity to hear, one of the sessions I was with superintendents and board members, and the, the stories of success, especially from schools and school districts that have really struggled academically, that have literally been able to turn around with, with the, with the Avid program, was, was very amazing. So I'm pretty excited about moving that into the next couple of years, into many of our schools. Like I said, the high schools will all be using it, as well as middle school will be beginning to implement it next year, or I should say this, we're not next year, this year. We're only three weeks away, in fact. But it was a, it was an excellent, excellent event. And, and getting into next year, our, our people keep asking me, what's the first day of school? It is Tuesday, September 4th. So it is the first day, first Tuesday after Labor Day, and that is required by the state of Wisconsin, given the fact that Labor Day is fairly early this year as compared to prior years. One other point, if you, if you have seen the Wasby Magazine in August, Jim Murray, our STEM principal, has, has featured in there. He was State Principal of the Year. It's been quite a while since the celebration took place, but now they are recognizing him. And he was recognized in January at the state, at the state conference. North Cafeteria, I know some of the board members have toured there. That's moving along fairly rapidly towards completion. If you do want to see that prior to completion or over the next few weeks, contact Darren, myself, or Glenn Order, and you can get a tour. Or you can probably just stop in because North is open quite a bit in the summer for, now that we've started football and, and the other fall, fall athletics already. So speaking of athletics, unfortunately, we will have three football games in before the first day of school. So that's the new WA schedule so that they can get all the playoffs in by, prior to Thanksgiving weekend. And finally, Joe Cook has, was recently notified by the state's Office of School Safety that they've received our Round Two Letter of Interest for additional safety grant dollars, and that could be as much as $600,000. And Joe and Darren have pointed out that they should be submitting that application sometime next week. And that's my report.
Yeah, I would second encouraging my fellow board members to go to North. There's some good changes. Plus, you get the hard hat, and it's a real hard hat, not a fake one. So I think it's gonna be a real good improvement, real good. Glenn and his team and Findorf have done a really excellent job out there, so. Okay, moving on to our standing committees, and that's where the heavy lifting occurs, as I so often say at these meetings. We're gonna start out, and we rotate through those committees. So we have different ones presenting first, and this month, we're starting off with the Safety and Security Committee, given by Amanda Roddy.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, we have one action item and six information items on the agenda. To begin with the action items, the school safety resolution. The Safety and Security Committee is recommending the board take action on the school safety resolution. The resolution was developed by the committee by using ideas from several proposed resolutions. At this time, I move for the board to approve the resolution as presented.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. McCaffery. Discussion? Mr. Baumgart?
I think we heard a lot, we heard a lot this evening, which I'm gonna try and reduce my comments a little bit, but I have to agree with everybody that said this resolution as it stands is not worth passing. It's, it's missing the most important part, the dealing with the assault-style weapons. We have to get that in there. The community has told us that, the kids have told us that, logic tells us that, common sense tells us that. Yet, it has come, this is the sixth or third time it's come back around with nothing in there about that. So I, I guess, quite simply, we have three members on that committee, and I would like to find out from them why. There must be a reason that they are avoiding the issue about dealing with legislating, regulating, banning, whatever the right word is, that they are avoiding that issue. And I think, I think we deserve, as the rest of the board members, the community observes, deserves, understanding why you're putting either yourself, politics, or something above the need of our students. Our responsibility as board members are to deal with seeing to it that our kids can come and go to school safely. You know, I, like I said, I can't figure out what the deal is, that, that you are avoiding this issue, yet that, that committee is avoiding the issue. So could you tell us simply why, again, this is about the kids? This is not about you or your politics? Why are you avoiding this issue?
Amanda?
As I stated a couple months ago, when I came before the board, I mentioned that, at least from my perspective, I don't, by doing this, I see this, we're open, we're, we're lobbying and we're opening the door to other lobbying groups who are trying to do this. I also stated at that time that it is not that I don't care for the safety of, of our students. That's absolutely not the case, seeing as my students are in these classrooms as well. And that's, those are basically the main points. And like I said, that's, I stated that before the board a couple months ago.
Mr. McCaffery?
Well, I clearly stated at the meeting, granted, it wasn't televised, the first one, that I'm not interested in banning anything. I don't think it's gonna, it's gonna help. I don't think it's a concrete solution to the problem. We've been asked to ban things as a board, which I voted against. I'm not a big banner, you know that, Bill.
So this is, you're banning your view of things as opposed to the kids' view of things? The safety of the kids.
My view of things is how I vote. Yeah, right. I mean, my view is that a ban on assault weapons is not gonna do much at all to protect the children in our schools. It's not.
Mr. Brusink?
We didn't hear from the other member of the committee yet.
Okay.
Sure. So for me, as I had mentioned at the Safety and Security meetings, one that was televised, and they will all be televised in the future if there was a question that was asked. For me, it's simply, we have a policy in place where we ban weapons from our grounds. There are no weapons allowed in our district. This is a policy we control. So for me, it's about control. What can we actually do something with the power that we have? So one of the reasons, let me, let me finish. One of the reasons why we formed the committee is to act upon the things that we have control of for safety and security of our students. We took it from an administrative committee, which had some impact, but we should have greater impact at the board level. I saw that as a big step moving forward. The legislation that needs to change is at the state and federal level. It's not here. We don't control that legislation.
We understand that, we understand that, Joe, but this is.
This is about control. I'm not finished, Mr. Baumgart.
I know, but I'm trying to move it along.
This.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So I'd like to do things that we do have control of, that is in our jurisdiction to change, and I believe we are moving forward with those, with those items. And as individual people, if you feel strongly about this, you know, I encourage you to write your state legislators, your federal legislators, and get them to move on the things that you believe they should move on. I think that anybody who wants to move this assault weapons rifle, rifle ban forward should be dealing with them. Why don't you go out and get signatures from the public and form a large group? And, I mean, if each of you went out and got 100 signatures and sent that to your legislators, that has an impact. It's a lot of people. So in the short, just in short, Bill, and I know you appreciate brevity, it's about control for me.
So the policy which outlaws the guns in school.
The policy that we wrote?
Yeah, I know the policy. So a person that decides he's gonna come into the school with the ban, with the assault style weapon, is gonna check our policy first and just say, oh, I can't go there? Joe, that's naive. That was a naive response, and I'm just telling you what I think, because you told me what you thought. As to whether or not we have a right.
Not naive to say that we have done, from a policy perspective, which what we control, Bill, is as strong as it possibly can be.
But you went on to say we shouldn't be lobbying. Joe, we are a government body who has a responsibility in the safety of our children. We need to get this ball moving, as many other school districts have. We're sitting around with our, what, four months now with our some, someplace. Forget it, didn't hear that. But anyway, we gotta do something about this, and I guess the resolution hasn't done anything about it, yet you have heard the community and everybody else say, "School Board, you have a responsibility to get on with this." And we aren't.
Kurt?
Mr. Brian?
I think it was good to hear, you know, the thoughts of the committee and where they're coming from, and I, it was pretty much in line with what I already knew. Nobody's, nobody's not communicated the same to me, either at the committee or when I talked to them one-on-one. Like sometimes, quite often, things come across that I vote on that I have a very hard time understanding how I could possibly support it. And sometimes, I'm only one that feels that way, and it's a eight-one vote, right? This is the same way. I mean, I may be an eight-one vote, I don't think so, but I don't see how I could possibly support something that, and I don't want to take a lot of time criticizing it because I don't want to devalue the, the, the good intentions of the, of the committee, okay? What I will say is that when you ask for more money from the state, you're asking for something you can't control. This resolution asks for more money from the state. You can't control that, but you're asking for it anyway. So when you say we shouldn't be asking for things we can't control, but yet you're asking for more money for, for this or for that, you're asking for something you can't control. So I, that's just not a sound argument to say we shouldn't ask for it because we can't control them. You can ask for anything. You may never get it. They may never have a hearing, they may never have anything, but we can still ask, just like our constituents are asking. Our constituents tonight, and we have constituents on both sides of the issue, there's, there's a couple of them here tonight as well, but the overwhelming majority have said they would like to cease action. Most of them have had been adamant about the ban, point of it. Some of them have been willing to be a little bit more flexible than using a ban, but for the most part, they want action. And when they say they feel like they're, they've met a wall that won't listen, that's what I felt like when I talked at the Safety Committee meeting last night, when these two amendments went up to them, and they just shoved them aside and said, "Let's submit, let the administration write something that we might like." That was like a wall.
That's right.
You know, we had two amendments that came through this committee from policy. We took them over to Safety to just kind of let it cooling down period, give it some time to, and we got both of them killed at that committee, which is not the intent, and they came back with something completely different that accomplishes nothing. So I can't even amend this and make it a good amendment, a good resolution. I really can't. I don't know how I can vote for this resolution, even if it was amended to add a ban in there, which I really don't support a ban either. But I would support a ban over this type of resolution because this does absolutely nothing. Nothing, but make us look bad.
Mrs. Brusink?
I don't consider this lobbying at all. I consider this my responsibility to speak on behalf of the safety of children, and that's why I was an educator, that's why I was an administrator, and that's why I'm on the school board, because my whole life has been dedicated to the safety and education of young children. And if our school board cannot make a statement that says we are against assault weapons, that's really pretty bad. I think it's our responsibility. This resolution isn't asking us to do anything except say we want a ban. That's all it's asking us to do. We aren't going to do the ban. We aren't going to be out in the community enforcing, policing. It's up to our police department to do that. But we are agreeing that there's a problem and that we are in favor of safety of children. And for any one of us to vote no, that we don't want to promote safety for our children, then shame on each one of us. We should not be on the school board then, because then we are not totally for our children.
Mr. Dietz?
I myself will be voting no on this draft resolution, as I don't feel that it's comprehensive enough in its current state. And instead, I will be offering an amendment to this resolution at the appropriate time.
So you're not gonna make an amendment tonight?
I am.
Oh.
But I want discussion.
Okay.
If that wants to continue or whatever.
All right, may I speak again, please?
Yeah, Mrs. Brusink.
I'm speaking in regards to this resolution. I believe it was in our packet. Was this? Pardon me? Well, I don't.
I thought you were looking at something else.
Where did I get it from? Was, I mean, where did I get it from?
Yeah, this is, this is the original resolution it came from.
Well, I guess I do not believe that it's wrong in any way, shape, or form for us to say the following, and may I, would you please give me the time to say it? One, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the School District of Waukesha supports the following measures as a part of a comprehensive effort, its supporting measures, to reduce the likelihood of mass shootings in schools and other places. I don't know that it will reduce it, but at least it's a statement saying, "We really care that this is an important matter." Number one, except for military and law enforcement personnel, a ban on the sale, transfer possession, and ownership of military-style semi-automatic assault weapons and high-capacity magazines. Two, the diligent enforcement of laws and regulations on background checks and waiting periods as they apply to the sale and purchase of firearms. I would hope we would do that. And three, closing loopholes in existing laws that allow sellers and buyers of firearms to circumvent regulations through transfers accomplished privately or at trade shows. And I'd like to add one more thing, please. This is personal. My husband was a. My husband was a federal agent for the Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms Division of the United States Treasury Department for 25 years. And I heard stories about firearms that would, like other people have pointed out, were horrific. He did everything in his power to ban the use of firearms illegally. And I wish I could tell you that he was extremely successful, but you and I both know that no matter what laws we've had or what efforts have been made, it hasn't been very, very successful. And he ultimately did, did resign and went on with his greatest love, which was, of course, baseball scouting. But for those 25 years, I listened to stories, and it's exactly what has happened in schools and in communities about shootings of people. It's awful, it's terrible. What's wrong with us saying, "We don't want this to happen"? That's always, that's all this is saying. It's not saying that we're going to go out and walk the streets, police. All we're saying is that we want a ban. That's all we're saying. That's all this statement is, is for the protection of kids. I don't know, folks, but that's why we're on the school board, to protect kids and protect our schools. Thank you.
Mr. Bryan?
I just want to touch on something that Mr. Baumgart said, and also something the audience said. I started this discussion, I think, when I first talked about the school safety and the idea of dealing with the request that came before us of referring back to the situation out of West with the stoplights. And I was on FNF, and we had it come before us about the need for the stoplights out of West. And it was all, well, jeez, it's going to cost us $200,000, and why should we be paying for it? It should be either the county or the state, or somebody should be paying for that. It's, it's a county road, or it's a road that doesn't, it's not our road. And we never did it. I mean, we didn't feel that we should. We didn't feel it was right to ask the district to pay $200,000 for stoplights that we thought someone else should pay for. Then, I don't know, maybe a couple of years later, I'm going to the airport, and I hear sirens, and, and the radio, they say, oh, there was a collision out West. You know, Flight for Life had been called, and, you know, and my daughters are driving to school. I didn't know if they'd been in that accident. And I called superintendent, and he hadn't heard about it, thought it was just a, I guess it hadn't got on his desk yet that morning. And so, traveling, I felt really bad once we knew what was going on, so I, I contacted, you know, there's an alderman that got real upset about it, the mayor chipped in, the county executive, Dan Drakis, chipped in. And we all sat down together because someone was seriously hurt and fixed the problem. And, you know, I think that even at the time, there was a couple of board members who, you know, still felt that someone else should pay for it. But in the end, it was clear that we had to wait until something bad happened before we fixed the problem. I drive out to West, and I see that stoplight out there. It costs us $20,000, okay? It didn't cost us $200,000, it cost us $20,000, because we got help from all those people. It'll always be the thing that I will always feel best about. It'll also always be the thing I feel worst about. And that's kind of the way I feel about this. If we do nothing, it's something to feel worse about. But if we do something, we try, it may not make us feel the best, but at least we tried. And doing nothing, just, then that's what this resolution is. This is a nothing resolution. And it needs to be amended, and, and it needs to be replaced. People can try and fix it, but it's not going to, it's not going to fly with me as it stands. And I think we spent a lot of time talking about it. I'm looking forward to seeing what kind of amendments we can put on it, because it's not going to pass tonight. We've already heard four people say they're not going to support it.
Amanda?
Yes, sir. Just a couple of responses to what's been said. Kirk, good point. You're right. We, we can ask for more money, and we don't, we can't control that. It simply isn't asked. So I'm going to agree with you on that. And I too, I always say, we can't wait till something bad happens to do something. And I feel that we are doing something. We have our plans in place with our administration that we send down to our principals, who then work with the teachers and keep things in line as best we can with regards to the safety of our students. With respect to the comments that we're on the school board, we're on the school board to protect our kids. We're on the school board to educate our kids. That is our role. Protecting them is absolutely part of the job, but the priority is to educate them. I've gone out and I've spoken to some youth in our community, and I asked them. I said, "This is what's going on in our district right now, and this, these are the concerns of our, of our constituents. This is about you. Tell me how you feel." And I'm not making this up, but they said, "If it's not guns, then it's going to be something else. Something else is going to be used." And I, and these, these are from, I wrote it down, I, students from north, from south, these are the students within, this is their words. And so I asked, I said, "So what, what makes you feel safe when something does frighten you?" And they said, "Well, being around my family or the people that I trust." And I said, "Well, why did, why do those things make you feel safe?" There's like, because of the relationship that's there. That made me remember, I attended a statewide safety committee for the school districts, and the experts in, at that committee had, or at that conference, excuse me, had said that we can do as much as we can to harden our schools, just as folks have been saying, you know, the doors, the windows, so on and so forth. But the number one thing that's going to keep our students safe is the relationships that we have with them. So whether or not that is answering anything that you think is appropriate within this resolution, but that's another, to answer you, another thing to where I'm coming from with this. We're, we're working on things that are within our realm as the school board, which is the education and, and keeping the kids safe with things that are within our grasp, because you're right, asking for money doesn't always, is not always in our control, so.
Anybody else? Ms. Ryancheck?
I'll say a few things, as long as my time doesn't get cut short by Bill.
Sorry.
I just have random comments on things from the many, many emails and papers and drafts and things that we've gotten. So I will just start. Some of these talk about the background checks and the loopholes and the waiting period, and we already have those. We already have the background checks. When someone is going to buy a, at the trade show, if someone's going to buy a weapon, they have to do it online. The seller does it online and can instantly see whether the person is a felon or if the person has a history of domestic violence, and they are not allowed to sell it to them. If a person buys from a legitimate, legitimate gun shop, there's a three-day cooling off period before the buyer can pick up the, the new gun. So that's if they're obeying the law, and we can't just... So if they're obeying the law, well, then my intuition says, well, then we need to enforce the laws that we already have. So, um, another thing, if we eliminate military-style weapons or assault-style weapons, that, what's, what's next? We've got people that can still, if, if someone's going to kill someone, they're going to get, they can make a pipe bomb, they can just go online and make a pipe bomb, they can grab a knife, an axe, a hammer, a bat. Are we going to be like England and ban guns, and then all of a sudden the stabbings go up? If someone's going to hurt someone, they're going to do it. It's in their head, they're going to do it. So where does it stop? I mean, we have these three pictures of the ones you want. Well, then it's, where does it end? This is a police officer's gun, so that means after they're done serving for 25 years, they're supposed to hand it over? To whom? And, and why? I'd rather have someone trained with a gun floating around out there, knowing that if something's bad's going to happen, someone on our side is going to be able to protect us. So I don't understand where, where it ends. Just because you guys want these three, well, when, there'll be more. Someone else will want more. I think, why, why isn't our, the, the group that's been speaking to us go to the, go to the gangs or people that have gotten their guns illegally and ask for them to give up their guns? Because they're not going to. So then the law-abiding citizens give up theirs? Then what do we have? I feel as though that we have laws in place that are strict, and if there's people that aren't obeying them, then they need to be losing their license and not able to sell. So the only thing that I agree with on this group's request in their amendment would be the diligent enforcement of laws and regulations on background checks and waiting periods as they apply to the sale and purchase of firearms, because we already have them. So I would be okay with putting that in our resolution as making sure that we ask our state legislators to enforce those. Maybe that's putting more people at those shows to make sure they are upholding the laws that we have. But taking away weapons and guns from law-abiding citizens does not, and, and the threats that I hear, it's almost like bullying, like all the emails that we've received, it's like, "This is going to be on your hands. This is, the blood is going to be on your hands if, if, if you don't act now, and what, how will you feel if something bad happens here?" Like Amanda, I have kids in our schools. Of course I don't want them hurt, nor anyone else's, nor my nieces and nephews and neighbors and anyone. So if someone bad comes into the school, or if someone who's making poor choices gets a hold of a gun, and they're going to get a hold of it whether it's outlawed or not, then I hope that there's someone to defend the rest of the kids. That doesn't make me not care about kids or the safety of kids. So don't put that on us. So I have also an amendment if, and I'll listen to Greg, because you said it first, but that's the only one that I would put in, that we uphold the laws that we already have. Thank you.
Mr. Dietz?
Mr. President, I'm going to move to amend the motion regarding the resolution before us to say the following. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the School District of Waukesha supports the following measures as part of a comprehensive effort to reduce the likelihood of mass shootings in schools and other places. Number one, ban the sale and transfer of military-style semi-automatic assault weapons and high-capacity magazines, except for military and law enforcement personnel. Number two, diligently enforce the laws and regulations on background checks and waiting periods as they apply to the sale and purchase of firearms. And three, close loopholes in existing laws that allow sellers and buyers of firearms to circumvent regulations through transfers that occur privately or at trade shows.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Saying by Mrs. Brzing. Could you, Sue, I don't think you got all that.
I haven't.
Could you give that to Sue, so we will at some point in time have to reread that?
Give it to all of you.
Discussion on the amendment.
The current draft in front of us lists numerous things that the School District of Waukesha and the state have done for student and staff safety, but lacks other important measures and statements. I feel it is inadequate in regards to what I have heard from all four students, especially the three that have continuously come to these meetings. I've been keeping track of emails and Freeman articles since June. Seventy-nine percent of those are in favor of a ban on assault weapons. As students Matthew, Lauren, and Luke have spoken very directly from their personal experiences that they live each day at school. I live each school day in a similar environment, as do my two kids that go to this district. Our students should not have to fear for their lives or the lives of siblings, other staff, or students. My amendment addresses some of these concerns and their fears. Matthew, Lauren, and Luke and the others are sending a real and powerful message that I clearly hear and I understand it. The one thing that I am certain of about tonight, though, is that their passion for and action on this issue will not end at this board meeting tonight, and I'm sure it will continue.
Thank you, Greg.
Further discussion on the amendment? Mr. Baumgart?
I just, I'm looking at a question that was posed to me, and we, I'm just going to read it. The question reads simply, "Are there good reasons for ordinary citizens to possess assault rifles?" I, for one, cannot think of a good reason for an ordinary citizen to possess an assault rifle. And I guess that's where my issue comes with this item. We, we are allowing that. It is legal. To address Karen's point, it's not just the illegal people that are having them, it's legal for a person to buy an assault weapon. And I can't think of a good reason for an ordinary citizen to possess an assault rifle. And I don't know who can give me a good reason.
Mr. Bryan?
I will have a difficult time voting for this amended amendment. And I'm going to explain to it why, and why I put the time into an alternative resolution. I'll end up voting for the amendment, even though I'll have a difficult time voting for it. I don't believe in bans. I think me and Mr. McCaffrey are probably like clones in that way of thinking. And I don't, I don't think a ban will necessarily, in and of itself, do a lot of good. I also agree with, you know, Mr. Colmell, that the idea, I think what Mr. Colmell's really trying to say is that it's not so much that we could pass something we don't have control over, but just us passing it won't make a difference.
That's correct.
Okay. And, and I agree with that. That point of it, I agree. I don't agree with the other point, that we don't do it simply because it's, we can't control it, but, but, you know, what we had happen with the safety committee was to take two resolutions and have them just cast aside, ignore everything that had been put in front of them, and come up with something really completely different. And, and we, we weren't listening to people. Sure, we got a lot of angry phone calls, that people didn't even read anything. They just said, "Oh, they're going to ban guns. We need to stop them." Well, my resolution never called for banning guns. It doesn't even call for, we don't even directly call in my resolution for the legislature to do something. Mine's going to WASB, which is the conduit we should be going to, to advocate for a position by WASB to be taken up with the legislators. I drafted my resolution for the purpose of hoping that I could get strong support across the board. We're here at a, basically a four, four crossroads. I didn't think the, the ban could get enough support, certainly wouldn't get strong support to pass, but it wouldn't get overwhelming support. So I tried to draft something that I thought we could reach consensus on, even from Amanda would maybe even support it, or Karen, or Joe, or Pat. So I feel very uncomfortable voting for this resolution, but I also feel uncomfortable if, if it passes, or if it had a chance of passing, and I voted no. So I'm going to support the resolution, even though I do not support bans. And I, even if the ban gets added to the resolution, I'll probably end up voting against the resolution, because it's just so poorly worded, so poorly constructed. It doesn't even, even the WASB resolution, I can't take the WASB.
Let's stick to the amendment.
It just won't happen. So I'm, I want, I am sticking to it, Joe. The reality is, even if we pass this resolution, this amendment to that resolution... The reality is, even if we pass this resolution, this amendment to that resolution, the resolution itself is not good enough, so.
Other comments on the resolution, or the amendment?
Amendment from Greg's?
Yes, Greg's amendment. Any other discussion on it? Mrs. Brusink?
I totally support it, I think it hits the nail right on the head. It, it's a statement, it's not an action on our behalf to go out and police, it's just a statement saying that, you know, we're concerned about assault in our schools, for goodness sake. It's just a statement.
All right, Sue, take the roll call vote on just the amendment, and let's read the amendment one more time. Would you do that, so we know what we're voting on?
Okay, to add in now, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of the School District of Waukesha supports the following measures as part of a comprehensive effort to reduce the likelihood of mass shootings in schools and other places. One, ban the sale and transfer of military-style semi-automatic assault weapons and high-capacity magazines, except for military and law enforcement personnel. Two, diligently enforce the laws and regulations on background checks and waiting periods as they apply to the sale and purchase of firearms. And three, close loopholes, loopholes in existing laws that allow sellers and buyers of firearms to circumvent regulations through transfers that occur privately or at trade shows.
So a yes vote would add this into the primary resolution. A no would not allow it to go in. Okay, Sue, take the roll call vote.
Karen Reinacek?
No.
Amanda Roddy?
No.
Bill Baumgart?
Aye.
Barbara Brusink?
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
No.
Greg Dietz?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
No. It's tie at four, motion does not pass. Needs a majority, the amendment does not pass. Now we're going back to the original resolution. Mr. Bryan?
I moved to amend the resolution to strike it in its entirety and replace it with the resolution I have in front of me. Resolution on school safety, safety of supporting public statement. Whereas the School District of Waukesha values the safety of all students and staff, whereas school authorities need more effective means to ensure student and staff safety in the event that a heavily armed individual on, or individuals mount an attack against our school community, where there are limited legal options to prevent hostile people from gaining access to dangerous and deadly weapons. Deadly firearms, excuse me. Whereas the Second Amendment to the Constitution of the United States proclaims, quote, "A well-regulated militia being necessary to the security of a free state, the right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed," quote. Whereas that Second Amendment does not prevent our legislators from enacting reasonable regulations on the sales, purchase, and possession of dangerous and deadly firearms. Whereas elected officials, we are duly sworn to defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin. Be it resolved that we, the duly-elected school board members of the School District of Waukesha, respectfully request that our state legislature and governor pass and enact legislation to constitutionally regulate the sales, distribution, and possession of dangerous and deadly firearms. Be it also resolved that we, the duly-elected school board members of the School District of Waukesha, respectfully request a resolution to be prepared by the Wasbe Policy and Resolutions Committee for the consideration by the Wasbe delegates at the next annual meeting, which states the following. The Wisconsin Association of School Boards respectfully request our state legislator, legislature, and governor pass and enact legislation to regulate the sales, distribution, and possession of dangerous and deadly firearms as needed to more fully protect our school communities from individuals who represent a threat to any school community.
Is there a second to that?
I'm not done yet.
Oh, sorry.
There, there is a supporting document that is part of this and will be included in the record.
But is that part of your amendment?
It's part of my amendment. The horrific school shooting in Parkland, Florida has led students, students, teachers, constituents, and school leaders to speak out forcefully against gun violence. Students, children, and whoever, who have experienced this trauma and lost firsthand are showing the way. As adults and as educators, it is our time to lead. With those student activists and with their grieving families, we too say never again.
Just point of order, Kurt, this, this is part of your amendment?
Part of my amendment. I'm, I'm having the entire thing as my amendment, okay? For years now, citizens of the United States have endured mass shootings in public venues, neighborhoods, and communities, house of worship, colleges and universities, and our schools. Children, our most vulnerable citizens, and our hope for the future are tragically dying from gun violence again and again. Statistics from countries around the globe show that it is possible to minimize gun deaths through common sense legislation. Here in the United States, we see that easy access to weapons, particularly those of military-style design, results in significantly higher levels of gun violence. We urge our governor and our state legislature to act, enact specific vigorous measures to reduce gun violence in our society, particularly in our schools. We need a robust, robust system of registration and background checks, with a particular eye towards weapons capable of rapidly firing a vast number of deadly shots. We need stronger mental health services and more effective communication among agencies responsible for the well-being of children, adults, and families. What we do not need is to arm our teachers with guns, which is dangerous and contrary to the professional aspirations of those who have dedicated their lives to the education of children. As school board members, we call upon everyone who cares about the education and the welfare of children to urge our state government to act. We need our teachers to be able to teach, we need our students to be able to learn, and we need everyone in every school around the country to feel safe. Our Wisconsin school communities represent multiple political parties and occupy different positions on the spectrum from liberal to conservative. Our Wisconsin schools are secular and religious, small and large, urban, rural, and suburban. We serve a range of children from K-4 through grade 12. Our calling is to serve and to educate children, to ensure their safety and well-being, and to help them grow into thoughtful and responsible citizens. Our responsibility as school board members is to provide a safe environment for our children to learn and grow. Please, help us do our work. Governor and legislators, please act now with vigor, determination, and urgency on behalf of Wisconsin's children. And yes, it's entire.
Okay, so there's a resolution and a statement, um, that supports that, seconded by Mr. Baumgart. Uh, do we all have a copy of this?
Yes.
I don't.
Everyone does?
Everyone.
Discussion? So, the, the amendment was to strike the entire original resolution as a whole and replace it with this.
That's correct.
Mr. Bryan?
You'll know that it doesn't call for a ban, it doesn't call for specific action against assault rifles, non-assault rifles, it talks about deadly firearms, it talks about keeping away from dangerous people. It's a broad-based approach to the problem that doesn't dictate how we address the problem, but does say we need to do something. And it does say, it's not our job to make these laws. It's not our job to do this action, this belongs with the legislature, it belongs with the governor, and it belongs with Wasbe to help push them to move forward with something to help protect our kids. Asking to ban things is something that's just, it's just hard to do, especially with our school board here. But, what I tried to draft here is something that I think we should be able to support, without so much animosity, it's not that hard.
Mr. Bungar?
Kurt, I agree with you, this, uh, this is a slightly different angle on it. It's very comprehensive, but it does cover things. Eliminate some of the stuff that we're already doing, and we didn't need in the two-page version, although we have a two-page version anyway, but it's for different purposes. Uh, I do think that the wheresses meet the need very nicely. I agree that, with what you said, it says the, uh, the handling of the firearms is a little bit less specific than maybe I would've preferred initially, but it's getting to the point that we're asking the legislation to start looking at this. Now, earlier we said, it's unlikely anything would pass anyway, though, but we heard from one of our visitors here, which is concerning on another level. But, um, the very fact that you've covered those points, I think is important. I also like the fact that you have set it up for a possible visit to the Wasbe Convention next January, because there's like four hundred and fifty districts that could get involved in this if they would do it. We've only had a handful so far, but we have had a handful, so this is another start in that direction. So I do support what you're putting, put together here, Kurt, and I thank you for that.
Mrs. Brusink?
Kurt, it does say that we support what we've been talking about all night. Safety in all aspects, including guns. So I, I can support this, this is well-written. And it does, I think, as you pointed out, Mr. Baumgart, it says this in probably greater detail than this, but it says the same, it says the same thing. It says the same thing.
Further discussion, Mr. Bryan?
Well, I don't wanna say it says the same thing, cause it doesn't call for a ban, and I, I, I do not wanna vote for a ban, I voted for it on the last one, but,
But it says we're concerned.
I didn't wanna vote for ban from day one, but I also wanted to come up with something that I felt my fellow board members could support. You never get a unanimous vote, but I felt that this is something that falls in line with what we should be supporting.
Mr. Dietz?
I'll be voting no, only because, um, it doesn't include the word ban, and I think in this particular situation, I think we need the word ban on assault weapons. However, um, I have a feeling it's going to pass, and I wanna thank you, Kurt, for all your hard work in pulling this together. It's a incredible improvement over the first resolution that came out of the committee, and, um, it would be at least a next step.
Mr. Bryan?
Uh, Mr. Dietz, I would urge you not to vote no. I'd urge you after it passes, if it does pass, to amend it, to include ban. I think you have to think about the, the fact that, you know, our country was founded on compromise, you don't get everything you want all the time. Sometimes you have to take what you can get. To say I have to absolutely have the word ban is kind of being a little bit stubborn about the situation. I voted for the last one, even though I absolutely didn't want the word ban. But I realize that I would rather have that pass than fail because I didn't vote for it. So I would urge you to vote for this, because I don't think it's so likely it's gonna pass. We have four pretty firm, uh, people on their position, and I don't know if anyone's gonna change. And if you vote no, it has no chance, possibly.
Mrs. Reinacek?
Uh, Mr. O'Brien, can I ask you what you mean by dead, dangerous and deadly firearms?
I try to avoid being specific, but let me give you an example. You gave some examples of stuff that you believe existed in current law. I'm not quite so sure if those things do exist, because I'm not, I'm not researching at that extent, but I'll tell you something that doesn't exist. We don't have a ban on bump stocks in this state. Even our president says we should ban bump stocks. The Attorney General is working on banning bump stocks.
So is that what you mean by dangerous and deadly?
Dangerous and deadly attachment to a weapon that turns a semi-automatic weapon into a fully-automatic weapon. So those are the types of things I hope the legislature will, uh, will, um, will, um, tend to consider. But I'm gonna leave it up to our legislators, I'm gonna leave up to citizens to lobby the legislature. We're just saying, give it some attention.
I believe any firearm in the wrong hands is deadly and dangerous. So if you remove deadly and dangerous, or dangerous and deadly, then all you have left is firearm. And that's our constitutional right to bear arms. So, in the wrong hands, knives, rocks, and sticks, and everything else are dangerous and deadly too. So, that's why I asked about your wording here.
Can I address that? Mr. Bungar?
That's an interesting point, Karen. But we have to read the rest of the sentence, and that is, ask the legislator and government to constitutionally regulate it. So, what I think that says is you have to stay within, this paragraph says you still have to stay within the Second Amendment.
What about the last paragraph?
The very,
Says, "The distribution and possession of dangerous and deadly firearms as needed to fully protect our school communities."
Look, the constitutionally regulate the sales, distribution, and possession, it would all be within, the way I'm reading this, Kurt, maybe you have to correct me, is that it's done within the constitutional dictate.
You know, I think what you're missing from this, and I think everybody supports this, is that, the, the complete sentence, you're taking fragments of it. "As needed to more fully protect our school communities from individuals who represent a threat to any school community." So, the restrictions they could entail could be, as you said, waiting periods are restrictions. People who are abusers, or domestic violence situations, those types of things are all there. So, there's nothing in this resolution that we're not already doing all across the country. And in some cases, even doing here in Wisconsin. So, this is not an unconstitutional request, and that's why I go through a long explanation on what the Second Amendment's all about and what it means. It's certainly within the realm of the Constitution, we've had some lawyers here, uh, coming to us to help, uh, help us understand that. So, and also, the resolution's saying, we want it to be a constitutionally regulated action, so, besides, they can't pass something that's unconstitutional, get struck, struck down by the Wisconsin Supreme Court, and nothing flat, so, plus the US Supreme Court.
Then why ask for it?
I'm not asking for them to do an unconstitutional act.
Dangerous and deadly firearms just doesn't make sense. That's like saying, dangerous and deadly rocks.
Well, it says firearms, and firearms is a large category, as, as was pointed out, it's not only guns, but it's rocks, sticks, whatever people use to hurt others, those are firearms. Are they not? Or are firearms just something that you fire with a gun?
I think the point, Ms., excuse me, Chairman, the point, Ms. Reinacek, is that, I'm not trying to dictate what they deal with, I'm leaving that up to our legislature to deal with, and our courts to deal with. We're not trying to say specifically what they should restrict, or how they should restrict it, or who they should restrict it from. It's not our job to do that. We're asking them to do their job.
Mr. Dietz?
After further reflection, Mr. O'Brien, I will be, uh, voting in favor of your resolution. Hopefully it passes so that I can amend it.
I'm having trouble with the word constitutionally. I don't interpret it the way you interpret it, Bill, at all. And, um, I just don't think this is our business to be doing this. It just isn't. Further discussion on the amendment?
Well, are we not supposed to support the, it's the Second Amendment of the Constitution, that's what we're doing.
We're asking to change it.
Mr. Colmo, that, that is, that is the most outrageous statement, and you made that more than once. We're not asking to change anything. You need to study that issue stronger, because the resolution is saying very clearly, we support the Second Amendment. We're leaving it up to the courts and legislature to decide what's constitutional, we're not gonna do that, we're not asking them to do that. In fact, that's how it's drafted, specifically, only do constitutionally what you can do. That's why it's down like that. So that comment is just, I, it's, it's over the top.
Mr. Addy?
Yes, thank you. I apologize if it appears that I'm beating a dead horse here, but this is exactly what I was referring to. Where does it end? We're gonna keep going in circles, what you think is an assault, assault weapon, what you think is an assault weapon, what I might think. We're going in circles. The decisions that we are supposed to be making here, sitting here together, the nine of us, is supposed to be curriculum, it's supposed to be, programs that we're opening up for our students to experience different parts of the world, and different things like that. A comment that I heard earlier says, um, says I'm uncomfortable with the resolution because it's a piece of paper and won't stop anything. I am hearing that we're supposed to take action. So, my action that I'm going to choose to take is to continue to work with our administration, and, um, gaining information from them, from experts that they work with with regards to school safety. My action as an individual, as a private citizen, is to go and address my legislators, both state and federal, just to open up the doors and say, hey, look, this is what I'm hearing from Waukesha. Sit down and hear from us. My actions with regards to me being a parent are going to teach my children why we do the things that we do to them. There's, there's a lot of things that I don't like to teach my children, but I have to, cause that's my my children, but I have to, because that's my role as a parent. So I'm going to help them understand as best I can to be safe in the reasons why mom is telling them to do this or that, why the teacher's telling them to do these things or that things. That's going to be the action that I'm going to take with regards to my role as an individual. As a board member, I know I have no power without the rest of you sitting next to me. So I'm going to choose to actions over the words that are written in this draft, your draft, or any draft. I do truly, and I hope that you believe me when I say this, I do truly appreciate your concerns and your calls and your emails, because that's showing me that you care for my children. I just... I'm choosing to take a different route of action than what you're choosing to. I'm happy to be alongside you as a private citizen and talking and having conversations, but in my role as a board member, I'm not going to take actions on a piece of paper that has already been stated. It's not going to have any change. Thank you.
I think there was one person in the audience who had addressed us, and I think you hit the word "meaningful" right on the head, and I might not have been expressing myself like you did just now, Amanda, but I agree with your approach. Mr. Dietz?
I agree that our job is to look at education and curriculum, but without safety, we have nothing. As a classroom teacher, I feel that. As a parent, I feel that. And if you don't have safety order, you don't have anything. It starts with safety and ends with safety, and everything else is secondary in my mind.
Mrs. Brzezink?
Greg and I were both elementary school principals, and we both know that within our schools, education was, of course, a top priority. But you can't have successful education if you don't have school safety, for goodness' sake. We had lots of rules about school safety, lots.
And I... Mrs. Brzezink, I agree with you. I agree with Greg, too. Safety is of the utmost concern. We can't educate our students without them being in safer environments. However, we are working with our local authorities. We are working with the FBI. We are putting together plans to harden our schools. We're going to be asking the community to go forth, potentially passing a referendum to help with the safety and security of our schools. We have applied for safety grants that the governor has made available and have been awarded. We continue to apply for more aid from the state. These are the things that, when I talk about control and meaningfulness, these are the things that we can do something on, and these are the things that I want to continue to do. Mr. Brian?
Well, that's why I'm not going to be able to support the... If this passes... If this doesn't pass, I won't be able to support that resolution, because it doesn't do anything. All the stuff you talk about are just empty words. And with that, I call the question.
Okay, let's take a vote on the amendment. So the amendment...
Mr. Como, would you say what yes means and what no means?
Yep. The amendment is to strike the original resolution in its entirety and replace it with what Kurt had passed out to all of us, which is a resolution and a statement of support, would you call it, supporting statement?
Supporting statement.
Okay. So a yes vote would strike the original resolution and replace it with what Kurt handed out. A no vote would go back to... The amendment would not pass, and it would go back to the original resolution that was first brought forth by Ms. Roddy, which came out of the Safety and Security Committee. Okay, Sue, is that clear? Anybody have questions on that? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Barbara Brzezink?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Greg Dietz?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Karen Reincheck?
No.
Amanda Roddy?
No.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
No. The amendment passes 5-3. So what is actually on the table now is what Kurt presented. Further discussion on this? Mr. Dietz?
I'm going to move to amend what we just approved with the amendment that I've already presented and distributed.
Where would you put that?
I would include that.
In, you know, so there's two resolves right now. Where would you suggest putting that?
At the end, third paragraph. Or let's see, no, second paragraph.
Second? Okay. So let the WASB one be last?
Yes.
Is that making sense? Is there a second to that amendment?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Brzezink. Discussion on... Now, I'm... I mean, we already voted on this amendment, but it was in a different form, so... Mr. Bumgarth?
Whereas I've been agreeing with the amendments previously, I am satisfied enough at this point with the resolution we have just approved as an amendment. Wow. Anyway, so I am not going to approve of this next resolution, next amendment to this resolution. I'm going to stick with the way it was written.
Further discussion, Mr. Brian?
As I said, I've never been comfortable with the idea of a ban. I do believe that we had to have that vote. We've had that vote. I'm also comfortable having this vote, but I will not be able to vote yes on this particular amendment.
Further discussion? Okay, so there is an amendment to take the language that Greg had distributed earlier, put it into the last amendment that had passed in the second resolved position. So a yes vote would add that amendment into what Kurt has presented this evening, and no vote would not add that in. Are we clear? Any questions? Okay. Sue, please take the roll call vote.
William Baumgart?
No.
Kurt O'Brien?
No.
Amanda Roddy?
No.
Karen Reincheck?
No.
Greg Dietz?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
No.
Barbara Brzezink?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
No. So the amendment does not pass, so we are back to this now as our resolution. So I do think we still have to take a final vote on the resolution as a whole, unless there are other amendments that people would like to bring forth at this time.
I don't think so.
Any other amendments? Mrs. Reincheck?
Mr. President, am I allowed to bring an amendment to the first resolution?
No.
Okay.
That's been stricken?
Thank you.
In our last vote that we had passed, not our second to last vote, sorry. So what we are looking at right now is we had stricken the entire first resolution. We're looking at what Kurt has presented, resolution and supporting text. Okay, is everyone clear on what we would be voting on now? Any questions? So we have to take one final vote on the resolution, which is Kurt's wording to a T. Okay? Everyone clear? I got some blanks. That's why I'm still looking. We're all clear. Okay. Sue, will you take the...
But do we need amendment? I mean, I'm sorry, a first and a second?
No.
Oh, it's for what the original vote was, where approval of...
So essentially, it's been amended. The amendment's been approved, and that's been passed, but we have to vote on the resolution as a whole.
As amended.
As amended. So this is the resolution as a whole now, the amended resolution as a whole. So we are essentially voting on just this, because the amendment was to actually strike the original text and put this in. So now we have to say, this is the amendment, or this is the resolution.
So then we keep the original motion and second from the first time that we started this whole process?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Got it.
Does that make sense?
It does.
Okay.
All right.
Good question.
Amanda Roddy?
No.
Barbara Brzezink?
Aye, yes.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Karen Reincheck?
No.
Greg Dietz?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
No. Passes 5-3. So this is the resolution that this board just approved, as Kurt has written it. Well, I appreciate everybody's contribution, everybody in the community, all the people who have emailed us, called us, stopped us in the grocery stores. It's good to see a vibrant community that cares and communicates with their local officials. So we're still in our first committee report. Back to Ms. Roddy, what else are we doing from a safety perspective?
Thank you. Yeah, so the second item on our agenda was our information item. It's status update on our safety grant application. The school district was awarded $518,605 for school, from the school safety grant by the Department of Justice. Our next information item is a nonviolent crisis intervention training. The Safety and Security Committee reviewed data on the number of staff trained in nonviolent crisis intervention, a program that provides staff with a framework to assist them in maintaining a safe and caring school environment. The next item was with regards to CPR, AED, and first aid training. The Safety and Security Committee reviewed the data on the number of district staff trained in these areas. We also spoke about the Health and Nursing Service Report. The committee reviewed the annual Health and Nursing Service Report. The report consisted of data collected by school health room clerical assistants about the health and nursing services provided throughout the year. Our nurses reflect on this data in order to make needed changes within our system to allow us to provide high-quality health and nursing services to our students. Our next item was the school safety report. The committee reviewed an update on school safety efforts and projects, the funding source of the project, and anticipated timeline of the project adoption... completion, excuse me. Additionally, the committee was provided information on the district's effort to address the mental health needs of our students. And lastly, the Safety Committee topics that will be... Topics that will be presented to the Board of Education, Safety and Security Committee included an annual report on facilities, technology-driven safety improvements, annual staff reporting, and other large safety and security topics as needed. The next Safety and Security Committee meeting will be held on August 16 of this year. That completes the Safety and Security Committee reports.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Roddy.
I do have a question.
Yes, Mr. Bumgarth.
In the past, we've always run that school nursing annual report back to the full board. Is that not a requirement?
The report is required to be provided to the board.
No, just provide.
So from committee to the board is the update done.
Fine. That answers my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roddy. Moving on to Human Resources and Compensation Committee, given by Mrs. Reincheck.
We have no report, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to policy, Mr. Baumgart, you have more than enough this evening.
I believe some of this can be expedited, but let's take a shot at it, okay? We have five action items this evening. Let me get the first two out of the way first, and then we have some discussion items. The first action item is Policy 2340, field trips and other district-sponsored trips. This, by the way, was read last month, and we had no reaction to it. The lead time required for overnight trip applications has been changed from 60 days in advance to 18 months. In addition, overnight, out-of-state, and foreign travel is going to be allowed only for students in grades nine through 12. Issues there dealt an awful lot with medication requirements and the ability to have people there that could properly give medication and things like that. So that is an action item. So I will move for approval of 2340.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Brzezink. Discussion? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Barbara Brzezink?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Karen Reincheck?
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Amanda Roddy?
Aye.
Greg Dietz?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye. Passes 8-0. Bill?
Okay, the second policy for action item is 5460, graduation requirements. Proposed revisions have been made regarding participation in the graduation ceremony for those with outstanding fees. We discussed this several times, and there was a change made... Field trips, that doesn't do any good. Here we go. Change made on this, which indicates how seniors that are in financial difficulty may approach the school district for hardship situations and still be allowed to cross the stage. And I move for approval of 5460, graduation requirements as changed.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Dietz. Discussion? Mr. Brian?
I'd like the administration, either Mr. Gray or Mr. Koch, to comment on this, because I know it's something that's came up in the past. I want to make sure what we have here is what we need to keep these angry phone calls from coming in, because Mr. Gray, I think we had this policy, had in the policy, it read poorly, therefore it didn't give the right coverage for you and...
Right. Well, I think it really recognizes what we do. The prior policy was kind of broken up into different policies. This puts it all in one sentence, so I think it now more correctly reflects what we actually do. We typically in the past did not withhold anything from anyone if there was a valid reason. So all I can say is that I think it more correctly reflects what we actually do, or what we actually have done, so.
Mr. Cook, do you want to?
Just echo what Dr. Gray said. This language was worked on with the business office, and it accurately reflects the work that they do with the families that come in with hardships. It addresses fee waivers and such.
Darren, did you want to comment or not?
Yeah.
I know you're implementing it, so...
Yeah, I'm willing to hand that off to a committee. Yeah, this is like Todd. So this, and Joe and I in the cabinet have talked about, this reflects and probably says what we've been doing in a little softer tone, but I don't think it'll change in any way how we've been proceeding with, you know, trying to collect outstanding financial obligations to the district.
Okay, all right. Mr. Brian?
I do have a little bit of a problem with the language. At the end, it says, "No fee waivers will be considered without a time of the request being made by the family." Why does the family have to be the source of a request for a fee waiver? Why can't it be a teacher, an administrator, if they say, "Look, I know this child..."
It can be, but typically because of FERPA and other rules, it has to go back to the family. The teacher can't, you know, act on behalf under FERPA. So we're just trying to avoid any privacy laws or anything else. It may be the fact that the parent doesn't desire that, so, I mean, the teacher can go to the parent and say, "Hey, we can take care of this. We can help you take care of this." That's fine, but I believe it would have to come from the parent.
Well, the statement doesn't have to be made, though. "No fee waivers will be considered without a time of the request being made by the family." To me, you don't have to make that statement. I don't think it's anyone, a community... I don't think it's, anyone, a community citizen who knows the family should be able to come to the district and say, "Look, they're too proud to ask, but I'm telling you, you know." I, I feel that way about all fee waivers. We should be able to have people come and demonstrate that to the district that you can, that allows you to use discretion. So when you put in that, "No fee waivers will be considered without a timely request being made by the family," it eliminates administrative discretion.
Well, we don't want them doing it 24 hours before graduation starts, I mean, which is literally, I mean, every year it's the last week, so we're trying to promote people to take care of these issues well before that so that the, the same, same type of issues come up. I mean, this year it was reported that we had $40,000 in, in arrears, yet that was a month before graduation, by graduation it was all taken care of. So we're just, it, it just, it helps urge people to hopefully take care of the issue right away, hopefully in the beginning of the, the school year, but if, if something happens later on, we'd like to, to help those folks, but it would just, just as a, as a matter of not, not waiting till the last two days of school.
Well, can't we just strike the "being made by the family"?
I, I don't know, I guess I would, I would want to confer with attorney on that because the, the family may not, may not want to accept that. We, we've had parents, we've had situations where there are fee waivers and the parents, for whatever reason, have found a way to pay it and did not want to take the waiver. I, I just, I just don't know that, maybe it's, maybe it's 100% okay, but I think before we have other people act on behalf of the family without the family's knowledge, that we should check that out.
You're not saying, I mean, I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is that you're making it, you're tying the hands, you're putting handcuffs on this situation, and they, they don't need to be there. You can say, "No fee waivers will be considered without a timely request," period. You don't have to restrict it to being made by the family in this policy. It could be made by anyone.
I, I just, I guess I'd like to check that out, if that's okay.
Well, if we gotta go to a lawyer every time, fine, do it right.
Well, I mean, it's, it's something that, that is, you know, that, that's a personal nature and we don't want to go to the attorney every time, but now you're act, you're, you're allowing people to make decisions for a family that maybe that family doesn't agree with. And I just, I just think it, it needs to be, to make sure that we aren't in violation of federal privacy laws.
We have, we have a couple of options I would see here. One would be, Kurt, passing it as in and, and just passing it as it is, or voting on it as it is, I shouldn't assume, but, and then if we can't research it and find out that can be deleted, we could come back to that as, as a future thing, or we could put it off. I, I don't know if this, is this, Joe, is this something that has to get into the handbook?
The policy language, this is an attempt to more clearly identify what we do as a district. The policy that is in place right now does not have this statement in. So you have a policy on fees that would be, that families would be directed to through the student handbook, and then through notices from the business office. So the change that's proposed tonight is to more, you know, to, to do that. If, if it needs to come back to committee, we, we meet monthly with policy, we can come back and make the change through policy, and if the board tonight decides not to pass it.
That would be the other option.
Then we could table it for policy and we could do some research on it.
Mrs. Reinacek?
I was just about to ask Todd what he said about the $40,000 that, I thought he said that one person owed that, but all of them together.
No, 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 it was collectively among all, all schools, but the point is, it, it, which is a large amount in the beginning of May, but by the end of the, the month, it literally was all taken care of, so.
So they all waited.
Because there wasn't time, there's no, there was no urgency for them to, to pay.
Yeah, so they all waited to the last minute to say, "We can't pay this"?
Either, either some did pay, actually many did pay, and, and others then filed for relief, or whatever the case was, but literally it was all taken care of.
What does it mean when you say, "Without a timely request"? What do you mean by timely? Is it like, within the year, someone needs to say, "This is what's going on, we thought we could do this"?
Well, we, we'd hope that it would happen at the beginning of the year, you know, if it's a family that qualifies for free and reduced lunch, we know that early on in the year, and if, if they want to come forth and say, "We'd also like, you know, relief for, for student fees," that would be a great time to do it. If, if there's something that happens throughout the year that impacts their financial status, of course, that would be considered timely. It's just we're trying to avoid that last, that, that big push in the last couple of weeks of the school year.
I'm going to interrupt, we have a subject we didn't finish before we jumped to this one, and that was dealing with Kurt's concern about.
Well, we can, there can be an amendment made, we can table this, there, Mr. O'Brien?
I would, I request just take it back to the committee and, if there's no rush, could we take it back to committee?
And I guess that was my point with Joe, and that's what we're going to do. So relative to this statement, we're going to take it back to committee for research. Now, if we want to go back.
Yeah, and I just would like, we could probably add some specific language versus timely, so that it's, so that there's no ambiguity about that, but.
So, so we still have the motion on the floor, are you withdrawing the motion?
We're withdrawing the motion and we'll take it back to committee.
Okay. Is there a second to that? I think that has to be agreed upon by whoever seconded. That's, Mr. Dietz, do you agree to that?
Sure.
Okay. Take that one back, Bill.
Got it. Okay, that was Field Trips and Graduation, that was, those were the action items. They've been resolved, at least tentatively. We have 13 policies under, oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry, I got, I got another action items to deal with, I'm sorry, I almost jumped over something very important. I have three action items here that I'm going to ask for a waiver on because of time, time urgency. If I can ask for one waiver, that's, that'd be an efficient way to do it, and I'll tell you what the waivers are dealing with, it is that we have one that we have to get done on tobacco and et cetera, so it can get into the, a student handbook.
That's 5512?
5512 and 7434, both, both, we want those in the handbook. The other two are simply language changes that go into effect for early college credit program in, in September, and 5113.01, part-time open enrollment, which goes into effect, actually is in effect right now, but we haven't changed our terminology, so it's just.
So you're, you're making a motion to waive for those?
I haven't made yet, I want to see, first I want to ask if everybody would be agreeable to one waiver request.
Yeah, ask, you, you, what you want to do is you want to consolidate these, these all into one.
No, I want to consolidate the waiver into one. Just, just a request for a waiver.
Oh, okay, sure.
So I, so I would, I lost my place, thank you. I will, I will move that, effectively we are asking the requirement for a two full board reading be waived tonight for these four policies.
Okay, so.
Second.
Okay.
And those are 5512, 7434, 2271, and 5113.01.
That's correct.
I think those should be entered into the motion.
Yeah, put those into motion. You've got them in front of you, I think, Sue.
Okay, so, any discussion on this? Okay, Sue, let's take the roll call vote to waive the second reading on these four policies.
Amanda Roddy. Barbara Brzink.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye, passes eight, zero, so we are waiving the second reading for each of these.
So I will be taking action on these now.
Okay.
These I'm going to do individually, though. 5512, Use of Tobacco, Nicotine, and Related Products by Students, and, that's 5512, and 7434, Use of Tobacco, Nicotine, and Related Products on School Premises. Administration of Schools has requested more detail in these policies regarding prohibitions of the newer forms of smoking devices such as vape and electronic cigarettes, and that is wording we have put into these. You'll see a paragraph in the, whoops, in the, in the middle of both of these policies, which spells it out a little bit more completely. And I am moving for, that, that was requested by staff, and I'm moving for approval of Policy 5512, Use of Tobacco, Nicotine, Related Products by Students, and 7434, Use of Tobacco, Nicotine, Related Products on School Property.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Brzink, discussion. Ms. Reinacek?
Would a lighter constitute as paraphernalia?
No. I don't think, no, does not.
Okay, and what is the consequence for having any of this?
We would defer to the discipline policy on how these would be treated as a Level One, Level Two, Level Three disciplinary, but what we wanted to do was to include, we, we talked to our assistant principals who handled a lot of our discipline, and they were dealing with a lot of e-cigarette-type issues along with the juice, and now with the availability of things like CBD oil and all of that, we just wanted to cover this as, as broadly as we possibly could.
Ms. Reinacek?
Thank you. What about the CBD oil?
That, if, it is ingested through a vape pen, which this is now covered, that it would be prohibited. We don't want the device and we don't want the juice that can go into the device.
Thank you.
Mr. O'Brien?
These types of devices were banned in my workplace eight years ago.
Is that right?
Yes. I was surprised when they banned them because it was considered an alternative to smoking, and they said, "It's still taking a drug at work and we're not allowing it." So this is just catching up with the workplace. We should be doing the same thing with our schools.
Further discussion. Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to revise Policy 5512 and 7434 as just discussed. Sue, will you take the roll call vote on it?
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Barbara Brzink.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye, passes eight, zero. Bill?
Okay. Policy 2271, Early College Credit Program. This policy is revised to reflect the legislature's changes, replacing the terminology youth options and early, yeah, youth options with the Early College Credit Program, ECCP. And if you look at the attached policy page, lots of just terminology changing in there, so. Anything else, Joe, that's merit in there? I didn't see anything.
No, this and, and the following policy just reflects changes that happened at the state, youth options to this name, and then what was course options to, to part-time open enrollment.
Well, the other one I missed in this, SCNP, Start College Now Program, so it's terminology we're changing. Oh, and I'm moving for approval of the changes to 2271.
Second.
There's a second, second by Mrs. Brzink, discussion. Okay, Sue, take the roll call vote.
Barbara Brzink.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye, passes eight, zero. Bill?
And Policy 5113.01 has, I want it straight. Part-time enroll, open enrollment is, again, discussion of beginning July 1st, 2018. This allows students to attend up to two courses outside their resident district, but is limited to attendance in a non-resident public school district. This one gets a little bit hairy, Joe, can you explain this one?
Yeah, this, so if you were to remember back, if you were on the board four or five years ago, we had something in place called part-time open enrollment, there was full-time open enrollment, part-time open enrollment. They changed to the course options program, which allowed students to go from one school district to another to access courses, and the, there was a transfer of dollars that was associated with that, and it was the open enrollment rate. What was happening and what was explained to me was that at, and what we experienced was kids came here under open enrollment and we got the transfer rate for open enrollment, and then those kids took course options in other districts and we were selling out more money. And so I think that this is an effort to go back to what was effective for students and families, which was part-time open enrollment, and eliminate some of the financial transfer that was associated with these programs.
Thank you. I will move for approval of the revisions to Policy 5113.01, Part-Time Open Enrollment, as presented.
Is there a second to that? Second by Mr. O'Brien, discussion. Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Barbara Brzink.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye, passes eight, zero. Bill?
Okay, now the rest of these, that's the end of my action items, the rest of these are first readings, we have 13 of them. A lot of them are, again, pretty basic. Policy 0151.2, Required Student Academic Standards Agenda. Language has been added to clearly identify the source of the legal requirement to identify the student academic standards at the first school board meeting in July, which we have been doing for a number of years. If you look at, we just changed the beginning of the sentence to, in accordance with statute, Wisconsin Statute 120.12, and that's it. Now, that will be a first reading, if you wish to join us at our committee meeting, please do so unless you have any questions on it tonight. Been doing this anyway, so.
All these items are discussion items, if you have ideas to bring forth to the policy committee.
Okay, Policy 0152, Officers. This policy has been modified to clarify the limited use of a secret ballot only for the election of officers and to be consistent with law. We have a sentence in here, quite simply, secret ballots may be utilized only for the election of officers, and they're talking about board officers there in the previous sentence. Any questions on that? Here's a biggie coming up. Policy 2260.02, English Language Proficiency. This policy has been revised to recognize the description of English Language Learners, ELL, and that it has been changed to English Learners, EL.
Mr. O'Brien?
Why? I mean, it, it seems to me that we're wordsmith, I mean, Mr. Koch, can you explain to me why?
You know, the, the policies that you have link to a Wisconsin statute, a federal law, or a Wisconsin administrative code, and when a change is made at the state level, the policy, it trickles down to what the policy, you know, what we should be having in policy.
That's not our idea, Kurt. Somebody's in Madison's making money on this, eh?
Mrs. Brzink?
Can the parents refuse to have these participate in this program? Can the parents say no to their students participating in this program, in the English Language Proficiency?
Parents can re, we have to offer a screener.
Yes.
Based off of Title III, that a lot, that does the English language piece, so that we can identify, families can choose to access services if they like, if they want to refuse it, they can refuse those services.
They can, okay, then, one more question, please. Is this program taken for credit or not?
It's not, it's a, it's a level of service that's offered, it's a, what would be, what used to be considered an English Language Learner Teacher, an ELL teacher. Somebody who's got skills in language development and helping a student under, who's, comes from a different language, a different background, helping them access our curriculum.
Okay, so is this taken as part of the daily school program for a student?
It depends on the level of need for the student.
This, this is a program that's been along, all the way.
I know that, I know that. I know that, but I was just wondering, is it during the school day, is it after school, before school?
It is, these are during school day services, they can be pulled out or provided in class.
This is a discussion item.
I know, but.
It's a discussion item, Mr. Baumgart.
And the discussion on the item.
Thank you.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah, it's a discussion item, it's, I'm not going to spend more than 28 more seconds on it. The only, the only point I want to make is, when we went to Neola, one of my concerns was, is that we'd come up with this cookie cutter policy book instead of having our own policies. And when I see this little dinky language change, it makes me worry about everything else we're doing, because I see no problem in doing this, other than the fact it doesn't make sense.
Well, it matches up with the statutes, though.
That's... I think a judge would agree that whether you say EL or ELL, it still complies with the statute.
Okay. Any further questions on that one?
I think it's important that we align ourselves with the statute.
I do, too. Okay. You got your 20 seconds in, Kurt. 2411, School Counseling and Academic and Career Planning. This policy is revised to provide additional detail regarding the role of the counseling and academic planning program with creation of the, the creation of the program, and the obligation to ensure accessibility. And if you look at the next page, a lot of this is exactly what we've been doing anyway, but they reformatted it so that it brings special emphasis to the developmentally appropriate need for these people and the kids that might need that most, so. It's no longer strictly like college and stuff like that. Any further questions on that one? Okay.
Okay. Go ahead, Bill.
3160 and 4160, Physical Examination for Professional Staff, 3160 and 4160 is Support Staff. Quite simply, this replaces the required tuberculosis test for, with a tuberculosis screening questionnaire. If they do not go through the screening, they have, they will, or the screening would tell them whether or not they have to have a, the tuberculosis test itself. And that's about all that one's about. Yes?
I just have one question, kind of in Kurt's vein over here. And all these were striking of education. Is there a reason why we're doing that? You know, the Board of Education is always the first.
Neola represents about 1,400 school districts. Half of their districts said school board, the other half said Board of Education, and so for a template and consistency purpose, again, to Mr. O'Brien's point, there is some, there is some cookie-cutter, to use the word, to some of these policies. But again, when you start to see that the revisions are going to say just the board as we get them in the future, it's to get us to that consistency as we review them.
And that will probably be defined in the, not the index, what's the other thing?
There's a dictionary.
The dictionary up front. Okay. 3160? Revisions to Policy 3217. The policy has been, oh, there's two policies, 4217 and 3217, Professional and Support. This policies have been revised with language to recognize the limited circumstances in which adult, non-students might possess a weapon on district property. Options have been clarified to separate lockback knives as a separate option from other knives. This is not about guns, by the way. This is about general, but it does include the specific changes that are dealing with knives, and that a knife lawfully used for food consumption or preparation, or a knife used for a lawful purpose within that person's scope of employment are permitted. And I believe that's the bulk of the change. They deleted a part on locked vehicle, weapons in locked vehicles.
Mrs. Brusink?
Yes. Mr. Baumgart, it doesn't say, you know, we had a big discussion this evening about assault weapons, and it lists a whole, a list of things that are considered to be weapons, but it doesn't use the word assault weapons. And I'm wondering, are all of these considered to be assault weapons?
Well, it says guns of any type.
Okay, so that would...
I guess that's where I would have read that then.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Other discussion? Comments?
And both of these policies have the same change. Okay. 5460.01, Diploma Deferral. This is not about the stage crossing. This is a policy has been clarified to be consistent with the age requirements in Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, IDEA, where students remain eligible for special education services. Now that it has been expanded to the school year, not just the school semester. That's the change in this one.
Our practice has always been to allow a student to remain through the end of the year that they turn 21.
Right.
Some school districts did not provide that. They ended the service at semester. So, you turn 21 in October, and you would be done with services in January when the term ended. This just clarifies our practice.
School year. Okay. 5460.01, Diploma Deferral. Now, we're going to get into a series of policies, some of which will sound repetitive, but we'll be okay with that. Committees. 0155, Committees of the Board are all subject to the open meeting, that's the issue in many of these is open meetings law. Committees of the Board are all subject to the open meetings law. This policy is revised to specify the requirements of a quorum for purposes of taking action. We currently do meet these standards for our committees, so no big deal there. The wording is in here.
Joe? If I may add, if you remember back a year ago or so, 2016, I think it was, the State Supreme Court ruled against the Appleton School District as it pertained to a committee that the Board had established and some of the actions that the district and the Board had taken. The policies that you're seeing reflect the changes that came from the Wisconsin Supreme Court decision. So, the next handful of policies, five policies or so.
Okay. 1210, Board Superintendent Relationship. This policy is revised to remove language about Board Oversight of Administrative Guidelines as the guidelines are created and revised by administration. If you look on here, there's just a simple deletion of a sentence. The Board shall re, the one that's been deleted used to say, "The Board shall retain oversight of any administrative guidelines established to implement Board policy." That is not the case. Administration can establish administrative guidelines without our help.
Mr. O'Brien?
I think that that would be a mistake. I think we have to say we have oversight over that administrative guidelines. I think it has to be in the policy. I think striking it's a mistake. We don't, it just gives us the authority over that, and it makes it clear that we have authority over that. I'd hate to have some super, future superintendents say, you know, "This Board has no right to question administrative guidelines" and refer to the policy book. I think it's, it's correct. We should, that's in there for a reason, I believe, and I think it should stay there.
You know why this came out, Joe?
That would require that all of our administrative guidelines go to the policy committee for development and approval, and then, then to the full Board for approval.
Oversight, oversight doesn't mean that. Oversight just means that we have, we have oversight over the superintendent, but we don't control his day-to-day life. I mean, it's a Board responsibility. Administrative guidelines are a pretty important thing for us to have the right to.
According to counsel, by leaving that statement in there, we would be then subject to having the administrative guidelines come to the Board for approval.
So, so the guidelines, I think, just to be clear, the guidelines are the administration's interpretation of the Board policy, correct? Is that a succinct way of putting it?
That's how we, that's how we've always operated.
We don't see the majority of them.
Right.
Never, never, I just don't agree with it, and I wanted to hear that lawyer come in here. I, I don't want to have the lawyer be the reason that we make all our decisions around here. And I only hear it from administration. I mean, it's, that's just not the way we want to do things.
There might be another sentence that fits.
Right.
Ultimately, we have oversight over everything, guys.
Yeah.
I mean, we do.
So, I...
Well, let's, let's take that one for something to research at, at committee, okay?
Did you say take it back to committee?
Well, they're going back to committee anyway, so that'll be...
All of these are.
That'll be at our...
Mr. McCaffrey?
You're talking about the guidelines. Do we have written guidelines for every policy?
Unless, unless there are some that are just based on law, but I mean, yeah, I mean, if, if we need an interpretation of it, yes. There are some that are just so plain on its face that probably don't need much at all.
So, when you say that they would all have to come...
An administrative guideline. If there were, if there's no guideline, then that wouldn't come forward. Sometimes our policies cover the, is built into the guidelines. So, student discipline, for instance, was built into policy when we, when we adopted it.
When we first started the Neola process, we all agreed that guidelines were something we weren't going to be approving all of. So, they used to be, and that made it muddy for us. We used to have the policy and guidelines prior to doing the Neola process, and that muddied the waters, actually, from a policy perspective.
Well, we actually had three things. We had a policy, we had policy guidelines, and we had administrative guidelines as another set
Yes.
that we generally didn't see. Kurt's raising an interesting point, that was, where does it say, "We can't say, 'Wait a minute, that guideline doesn't work.'" And I think that's what we should take back to committee. And we've got time to do that, right?
Yes, we do.
So, that one is, did you make a note, Joe, to bring that to committee?
Yep.
Thank you. Policy 7430, Safety Standards. This is really getting into, and this is not the Safety Committee, Safety and Security Committee. This is, any, any little committee that they want to form, it can be formed for the health, students, visitors, employees, and so on and so forth. Let's see. Take appropriate action on any violations there and report such actions to the superintendent. Potential ascertain, so... That's the only thing we did in here was take up, besides the "of" educations. The sentence that says, "Set employees shall also have the authority to organize and direct the activities of a district safety committee." That is not the case. They can do it at their school. Okay? All right. That was 7430. 8309, Open Meetings for Non-Board Committees. This is a new policy to be considered a first reading. This new policy provides considerations for evaluating the source of a committee to do, to evaluate if the open meetings law requirements pertain to the committee. And really, what it comes down to is who formed the committee. If we, as a Board, directed the formation of a committee, it becomes an open meeting requirement. Is that, did I interpret that right?
That's, yeah.
And we've always followed that?
I guess we have, yeah.
The last Board-directed Committee was when, when people wanted some books removed from the libraries, and those were all done under open meetings. Prior to that, actually, prior to my time, the, there was a committee on, on closing some schools. Those were all done in open sessions, yeah.
Isn't this being driven that, I thought it was maybe even Appleton?
Going back a handful of policies, this is all based off of the Appleton Supreme Court.
Okay. Make the last four or five, plus a couple more, yeah. Okay. On 8309? Citizens Advisory Committees. Policy is revised to provide direction regarding the open meetings law for citizens advisory committees. Again, it's going to come down to the formation of the committee. If the Board is directed, well, as it says, "In its discretion, establish a citizens advisory committee and assign to each committee a particular blah, blah, blah," that will become a open-meeting-law-required group. As opposed to, for instance, PTAs and PTOs and stuff like that. Those are not required, I don't think, so. Okay. That's 9140. Am I getting it caught up here?
Question, please?
Yes?
Do we have any citizen advisory committees? I'm not...
I have a superintendent's advisory committee, but that's not a Board-established committee.
Right, it's not.
Our meetings are open, but typically, that, that's not a Board-directed Committee. That's one that, that I...
Thank you.
That's probably it, but we, if we chose to establish one, the Board, that would have to meet the open leading, meetings requirements.
So, for example, the governing boards at our Health Academy, the governing board at our Health Academy, they, they are required to...
They post their meetings.
Yep.
Yep. They're open.
So, you know, all of our, actually, all of our charter schools, so.
Yeah. And, I know you're holding your breath. This is the last one. 9211, District Support Organizations. Policy is revised to provide direction regarding the open-meeting law requirements in district support organizations. They really cleaned this one up, I guess. The superintendent is authorized to provide support and assistance as appropriate upon the request of such an organization. Each group will abide by the policies of the Board. Again, if we aren't establishing them, it's not a requirement.
So, like...
Mr. O'Brien?
Do we want it to be this open? Because essentially, you have no... Our administration, the school district has no ability to step in on it. Like, we've had so many of these PTOs struggle with financial problems, right?
Right, right.
When you take administrative guidelines out of it, which is what really gives us the meat of what to do, and that's why they're there, and just say, "Well, the superintendent can get involved if he's requested by the organization." Why we want to do it, or do we...
Why we would want to get involved?
Or a reason why we don't, we can only get involved if we're requested? I mean, in the past, in the past, when we had these fundraising issues at a couple schools, and it seems like it happens every two or three years.
I mean, it is a separate organization, and the one situation, for whatever, the officers did not want us to get involved, so at that point, we said, "Based on the transgressions, you know, you won't be able to use school facilities." That got us involved. You know, I, I think we do have control over these because if they, if there is something going on that violates other policy or potentially violates laws in some case, we can simply exclude them from our facilities or participating in the district in any manner.
Mr. O'Brien?
So, what I would suggest is a good standing clause.
It's good what?
It's a good standing clause that would require the, the organization to remain in good standing to continue to use school district facilities and resources.
Yeah.
That way, at least we have some authority over...
And that is our practice, so that would be good.
So, let's have a good standing clause.
We'll put that in there.
And maybe we need to, I mean, there, there is this statement that says, "Each group shall abide by the policies of the Board." So, maybe we need to follow it up with another sentence that talks to, if you're not following the policy, what happens.
We can, we can combine those right in there, Joe. Yeah.
Mrs. Brusink?
Yes. Mr. Baumgart, I'm sorry, but I, I had a question for policy number. It's, it's back to 8309, Open Meetings and Non-Board Committees. And this is my question. If you and I would meet someplace out of the boardroom, is it not possible for us to discuss anything related to school board business? I mean, just you and I, if I said, "Well, what do you think?" Or you would say to me, "What do you think?" Or if I ask you a question about a meeting, or a...
I don't think those are meetings.
No, no.
That's not illegal.
And there's even situations where it's a social event where
Yes.
more, even more than, than a quorum could be available, but those, you know, you couldn't.
But it's not illegal.
It depends on what you say.
There you go.
If you approach Mr. Baumgart and say, "I want to have coffee," and then you say to Mr. Baumgart, "I want you to vote this way on this."
Oh, no, I would never do that. Yeah, that's different.
Then you have started a walking quorum.
That I know, that I know, but I just, just discuss something that happened or is coming up. That's not illegal.
I, just two people, I can't imagine.
Okay.
I mean, usually, it has to be a quorum of the Board, or a quorum of a Board-established committee.
Yeah, three-person committees, you have to be very careful because you form a majority of the committee. So, there is some caution that needs to be approached with this.
Well, our policy committee is three people, and if, if you and Greg got together to discuss something, you're just, that is an issue.
I just wanted to...
It would become...
Now, if you, if you asked a question of, let's say, policy, and Mr. Baumgart is the chair, and you asked a question about, "Hey, can you explain what this is, being agendized?" or something like that, that's perfectly fine.
Okay. Yeah, but no, not to say, "Vote this way or vote that way."
And I'm not the district attorney, so I'm not, I'm getting...
I think you're right.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah, I just, on this good standing issue, I really think the superintendent has to have broad latitude on good standing, and then there should be an appeal process for the organization to come to the Board in the event, you know, they want to contest their loss of standing on the superintendent's part.
Would they come to facilities and finance because it's probably financial-related, or?
Well, whatever, making petition to the Board. You can, you can put an administrative guideline together on it, I guess.
Okay. Well, I mean, we have a number of things that are appealed, like transportation, that come to FNF, so I'm just looking for a starting point on that.
Yeah, yeah. But I, I think we need to give you the power, and then we need to... Yeah, but I think we need to give you the power and then we need to give them some right of appeal or right of, we just.
Okay. Those thirteen items were approved at our July seventeenth policy committee meeting and are slated for approval of the full board at the September meeting. So the full board. The next policy committee meeting, if you care to join us and discuss any of those policies, is scheduled for August twenty-first at four o'clock. We have moved our times to four o'clock.
Four o'clock.
Yeah. That concludes my limited agenda.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Baumgart. Moving on to technology, given by Mr. Dietz.
Mr. President, the technology committee did not meet over the last month, so no report this evening.
Okay. Moving on to finance and facilities, given by Mr. O'Brien.
Yeah, we have like a thirty-five to forty-minute presentation tonight. We're going to pass on that.
You're going to make me call for a recess?
Action items. We had a total of three action items. First is the approval of the twenty-eighteen nineteen budget for publication. The committee has, was presented a preliminary budget for publication totaling one hundred and eighty-two million, one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, sixty-six dollars in revenue and one hundred and eighty-three million, three hundred and fifty-one thousand, five hundred and ninety-one dollars in expenditures. The budget adoption format is on page three of the budget booklet, included in your packet for your review. You should all have your budget booklet. With the approval of the board tonight, the preliminary budget will be presented to the public at the budget hearing on September twelfth, twenty eighteen, prior to the regularly scheduled board meeting. The final twenty-eighteen nineteen budget will be approved in October. The committee approved the twenty-eighteen nineteen preliminary budget for publication, and I so move.
Second.
Taken by Mr. McCaffrey, discussion. We've been working on this a while, a lot of assumptions, as we have every year, and a lot of unknowns till we get another couple months along, so. All right, Sue, will you please take the roll call vote?
Barbara Brusink.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Karen Reinichak.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye, passes eight-zero. Kurt?
The next action item is the approval of the twenty-eighteen twenty-nineteen preliminary tax levy, and I might emphasize preliminary. The committee was presented a preliminary twenty-eighteen nineteen property tax levy totaling seventy-nine million, seventy-five thousand, five hundred and forty-three dollars and a projected tax rate of eight dollars and twelve cents. A tax levy summary is on page four of the budget booklet, included in your packet. The preliminary tax rate is a zero nine, nine cent decrease from the previous year. This tax levy and rate information will be presented at next month's budget hearing. The final twenty-eighteen nineteen tax levy rate will be finalized in October once resident enrollment counts are known and the state of Wisconsin certifies property values and state equalization aid. The committee approved the twenty-eighteen nineteen preliminary tax levy as presented, and I so move.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Taken by Mr. McCaffrey, discussion on the levy, proposed levy. Best guess levy right now? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Karen Reinichak.
Aye.
Barbara Brusink.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye, passes eight-zero. Kurt?
Third and last action item, approval of Lyndon Grove easement request. Committee was presented an easement request from Lyndon Grove Inc. involving a portion of the North High School campus practice fields. The easement was, once approved, will document an existing stormwater line and drainage swell that Lyndon Grove has been utilizing since they agreed to swap parcels with the district in the nineteen nineties. At the time of the initial swap of parcels, no formal easement agreements were completed. Lyndon Grove is now looking to do an expansion of their facilities, and the city of Waukesha is requiring an easement to be approved before construction can begin. The committee approved the easement request, and I so move.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Karen Reinichak, she raised her hand before you said second. She was quicker on the draw. Mr. O'Brien.
If you remember, we did an easement with the city before, city of Waukesha. This went a lot easier because essentially, we all know what we're looking for now, so it was really very straightforward. And, you know, we have, it doesn't constrain us very much, but it does make sure that they have the proper easement.
We should have done this a while ago, let's just put it that way. Okay, Sue, take the roll call vote.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Thank you. Aye.
Barbara Brusink.
Aye.
Karen Reinichak.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye, passes eight-zero. Kurt?
Information items. We had a fairly long, lengthy coverage of the referendum planning and seeing progress made as far as changes that would be made at some of the middle school level. The committee was presented detailed information on the scope of work to be completed at the middle school level and a review of the financing plan. A copy of the PowerPoint presentation is on your desk for you to review, and that would be right here. I do suggest to people that didn't have a chance to watch F and F, review the PowerPoint, and get back to the business office or the superintendent with any questions.
One here.
The F and F committee will continue to review the different parts of the referendum plan over the next two months. In September, we will be looking at the elementary level, STEM sites, and the high school scope of work and the communication plan. In October, district safety and security and other outstanding issues will be discussed. I'd like to make sure all board members reviewed the proposed financing plan that calls for borrowing, the sixty million over ten years. Saving to taxpayers over thirteen million dollars in interest expense when compared to a twenty-year debt schedule. The vast majority of school district bond issues utilize a twenty-year debt schedule, which lowers the initial tax rate impact but costs taxpayers millions of dollars in additional interest over the life of the bonds. And if some of you board members have been here long enough to remember when we went and shortened and took that savings, well, to take the savings properly, you should take it upfront, not try to do it later because it costs you money to do it later. And that's what we're proposing in this case. Next information item is monthly budget report. Revenues and expenditures continue to be within budget limits for both the general and special education fund. The district is operating in accordance with our approved budget and all of our other funds as well. And before I conclude my report, I want to circle back to referendum planning. We are going to have a provision in there where we could end up paying it off a little early if we choose to. Instead of it being a ten-year payback, it could come down to an eight, nine-year payback if we choose to at the time. Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Moving on to teaching and learning, given by Mr. McCaffrey.
I have no report this evening, Mr. President.